Okay, we're going to convene the committee on finance to start our hearings on Senate bills. So first up is Senate Bill 116, S D one, H D one relating to special number plates. First up is, let's see, we have Sarah Fairchild on Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, please proceed.
There we go. Hi, I'm Sarah Fairchild. I'm the Executive Director of that rigor Duke Hanamoku Foundation, and I'm a founding member of the Hawaii Water Safety Coalition. I'm testifying in support of the Duke Hanamoku License Plate Bill to raise funds for local aquatic safety grants. According to the Department of Health Statistics, drowning is now the leading cause of death for archaician Hawaii ages one to fifteen, and Hawaii ranks second in the nation for rate of drowning among residents. As someone whose work is to promote our ocean-going culture and support our amazing past, present, and future water athletes, I find these statistics unacceptable. We clearly are not exposing all of our people to aquatic skills in an equitable way. Passing this bill would be a simple way for the state government to support aquatic safety with minimal cost to the government. There are multiple wonderful organizations in our state teaching water safety, and all of them could be, could use more resources to teach more people lifesaving aquatic skills. Should you pass the bill today, I would suggest one small amendment. On line three of the bill, it lists Duke as a lifeguard and lifesaver. And in talking to Duke's official biographer, I understand that we have no official record confirming that he was a paid lifeguard. As an adept waterman, he performed as a modern lifeguard does in preventative actions, rescuing swimmers in distress, and even recovering bodies of drowning victims. He also worked extensively with the American Red Cross to promote swimming and water safety across the country. Had he been born a little later or never pursued the Olympics, he might have been a paid lifeguard, but obviously fate had other things in store for him. So for the historic record, I would recommend removing the word lifeguard. Regardless, Duke showed throughout his life that he cared about the safety of people in the water. He advocated for water sports, and he continually invited people to enjoy all the ocean has to offer, and this bill would continue that legacy. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone present wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next bill, moving on to House Bill thirty-two ninety, S D two, H D one relating to American Sign Language. First up is Angela Melody Young, cares on Zoom. Not present. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, no one here. Yes, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kirby Shaw. I'm the Executive Director of the Disability and Communication Access Board. The D C A B supports the bill. However, we ask that the bill be amended to include that the chairperson of the task force or the working group be able to appoint two members of the, of the, of the task force who are persons who are deaf. So with the saying that not about us without us, so we think that deaf persons should be included on the working group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill. House Bill twenty-eight thirty-seven, S D two, H D one relating to Oahu Region Healthcare Systems, Hawaii Healthcare Systems Corporation. First up, we have, let's see, Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita. My name is Blair Goto, Deputy Attorney General. I think that few would argue against the concept that when a facility is located on an island, that island community should have some input into the, that facility. There may be policy disagreements as to the level of input or control the isle community should exert. The Department of the Attorney General does not weigh in on that policy discussion. Instead, I testify today to point out that this bill entitled Relating to the Oahu Regional Healthcare Systems, Hawaii Health Systems Corporation, is not an appropriate bill to enact Maui regional healthcare system control over the Maui State Veterans Home. So accordingly, we are recommending that deletions as detailed in our written testimony be made, and I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up was Oahu Region, H H S C. Not present, okay. Next is D O D, Bruce Olivera, on Zoom.
Aloha, hello, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitakawa, and members of the committee. I'm Bruce Olivera, Interim Director for the Office of Veteran Services. I stand on my written testimony and would like to highlight the proposed suggested amendment to the existing H D one version before you. Under H D one version, on page two, section two, B three, second line, where it states, which shall secure ownership of the land of the proposed state veterans home on Maui, the word land may become problematic for an existing landowner. Therefore, the proposed amendment would be to strike the word land and replace it with facility. The proposed language for H D two would then be, which shall secure ownership of the facility of the proposed state veterans home on Maui. Thank you for your consideration of this important legislation. I will be available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Tom, Thomas Driscoll.
Chair, Vice Chair, members. I'm Tommy Driscoll, former president, CEO, H H S C for thirteen years, now Healthcare Coordinator, State Office of Veteran Services, here today to fully support, strongly support your request, your support for this important bill. Our Big Island has a veterans home for our veterans. Oahu will soon open a veterans home for our veterans. This bill creates the pathway for us to open a third veterans home on Maui for our veterans. This new facility will create new jobs. It'll, it'll bring in federal funds not currently experienced. It will create rotational education experiences for Maui Community College, for the high schools. It will help Maui Memorial reduce the waitlist program, which is a big issue of non-acute patients tying up acute care beds at Maui Memorial, and it will help our veterans with services they sorely need. We, we've done a lot of great work in the past, but this is a significant piece that can make a difference for many years for our veterans. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I'll be available for questions, and we appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Malia Spinda, H H S C Corporate. You have our testimony written, but I just wanted to jump up and acknowledge the A G's testimony. Our testimony asked for, to revert to S D two, which might be able to avoid that title issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we're going to move on to the next bill, House Bill, Senate Bill twenty-three forty-five, S D two, H D one relating to crisis intervention. First up is Office of Foreign Affairs.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kaylee Nixon here from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We stand on our written testimony in support. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is the Office of the Public Defender.
Hi, my name is Megan McDonald, Deputy Public Defender. The Office of the Public Defender fully supports S B two, three, four, five in the establishment of the crisis intervention officers within the law enforcement. Law enforcement, as we all know, are typically the first on scene for any sort of mental health crisis, and their interactions do have a direct impact on how the situation unfolds, including for the safety and survival of anyone, of those who are suffering from mental illness. To further highlight what's at stake, here are a few people who actually recently lost their lives due to a lack of crisis intervention training. On March ninth, twenty twenty-four, Ryan Gaynor was shot and killed by police in California. He was fifteen and autistic. March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, Isaiah Gregory Hill was shot and killed by police in Tennessee. He was twenty-five and suicidal. May sixth, twenty twenty-three, Alex Naone was shot and killed by police in New Hampshire. He was twenty-three and having a mental health episode. January fourth, twenty twenty-three, Sayed Fassal was shot and killed by police in Massachusetts. He was twenty and having a mental health crisis. January first, twenty twenty-three, Mischa Fay was shot and killed by police in New Hampshire. He was seventeen and having a mental health crisis. All this is to highlight that crisis intervention training is important and necessary because it saves lives, which is why we do fully support this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is State, Hawaii State Department of Health, Behavioral Health Administration. Okay, not present. Okay, next is the Department of Law Enforcement.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitakawa, members of the committee. The Department of Law Enforcement, as you know, have been before you a number of times on various crisis intervention bills that have been moving through the legislature. This is one of them, and we're not exactly sure what happened with the House draft version, but all of the things that gave law enforcement the tools to work with and help people in crisis were taken out of the H D one version. We're asking that we go back to the S D two version with an amendment. So this bill really does nothing other than give the Department of Law Enforcement some money for a couple positions to try to help coordinate training statewide, whereas the prior version actually put that mantle on our shoulders. And we've been working with a number of partners, including the County Police Department, on that issue so that we can, everybody's doing crisis intervention training, but it's a matter of trying to standardize it across the state. But one of the big things that we've been looking at doing is actually giving the law enforcement officers some kind of authority to work with people in crisis. Right now, they can call a mental health emergency worker who can decide whether or not the individual should go into a psychiatric facility or leave them alone. This bill would let them make a decision whether to put them in a behavioral health crisis center as an option. But law enforcement can't, they have to call an M H E W. They currently have to call an M H E W if their option is either arrest them, the individual, call an M H E W and hope that they can do something with them, or they leave them on the street. So the representative from the Public Defender's Office is right. Law enforcement needs some tools to work with this, this group of people that are kind of in the middle. They don't belong in jail. They don't belong, arresting them is not the right thing. And so the, the prior versions and some of the other vehicles that have been moving through the legislature would actually let the law enforcement have specially trained crisis intervention officers who can make a determination, hey, you know, something is seriously wrong with this individual, let's take them into custody, but not necessarily arrest them, but be able to transport them to a behavioral health crisis center so that somebody with the expertise can figure out how best to help those individuals. And we're just asking that we go back to the S D two version with the amendment that we're proposing. Thank you very much. I'll be here for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is the Hawaii Primary Care Association. Okay, not present. Alzheimer's Association. Present, okay. Queens Hospital Systems.
Hey, Chair Yamashita, members of the committee. J C Mikey Locke, on behalf of Queens Health System, appreciate the intent of the measure and so forth, and we're very supportive of giving our law enforcement officers the training they need to make the right decisions while they're encountering someone who's going through a serious mental health crisis. Our concern is that right now we have an incredibly successful mental health emergency worker program that Queens actually has a contract for through the Department of Health. An officer encountering someone with a crisis can give a call on that number. I think the, the phones are picked up within seconds. We've never had any significant delays in getting those calls taken. And then we have a clinical expert that actually helps them address that crisis and figure out if the appropriate place is to take them to a facility like Queens or Castle, or into a jail situation, or, as the officer said, leaves them on the street, or they find some other place to take them, like a behavioral health crisis center. So we hope our resources can go to the training, to the other stand-up of the behavioral crisis centers, and then also, you know, look at addressing this maybe in another way after those pieces are, are addressed over time. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have the Epilepsy Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom. Not here. Okay, next is individual Rick Tabor. Not here. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Representative Kobayashi.
For Department of Law Enforcement, are you sure this, this money that you talk about is sufficient to do the job and to do the training necessary?
Yeah, so the three, yes, sir. The three positions that we're looking at are not necessarily
Only three.
Three, four, whatever, whatever the number is. It was three or four, it's going back and forth. But we're looking at those individuals, and they don't necessarily need to be law enforcement. We're looking at individuals that are the right professional background to help coordinate the training and the trading. There are national organizations that actually provide the training that all of the departments are currently using. There's just some little differences among the counties, the way it's being used. And so there's kind of two parts to this. One is making sure that all of the law enforcement officers are receiving crisis intervention training so that they can work on de-escalating people in crisis.
No, I just want to know if it's sufficient resources.
Yes, sir.
It sounds a little beauty.
Yes, it is, because every department has training as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Representative Takano.
Also, for Department of Law Enforcement. Sorry, I just wanted to, so you know the changes between the last Senate draft that you like to go back to and then the House draft? So isn't, is, is the concern that, you know, if a regular officer, you know, was just trained up by these specialists in a lot of things we talked about in Health Committee, right, so that the regular officers have this training to start being able to identify these kind of situations, won't they be able to just divert, do they need the specific language in order to divert them to the crisis center? Won't they be able to just do that when they make the assessment themselves?
No. So you've got two different types of training going on. You've got de-escalation types of training where officers just, they, they are training how to recognize and work with an individual in crisis. Then it's a matter of who has some extra training and actually realize, wait a minute, somebody else needs to get involved. We need to get them somewhere so that they can be safe and get the help. And it's those, it's crisis intervention officers, not necessarily the, the regular beat officer that has the crisis intervention training. There's, there's two separate trainings that There's, there's two separate trainings that, that we're looking at. And every officer statewide is already getting your crisis intervention training to deal with de-escalation, but it's a matter of getting some specialized trained officers, like H P D has a number of them already. When they have a, an encounter, they're able to call on them to come and help, but right now, they don't have any authority to take them anywhere. So in order for a law enforcement officer to take them into custody, you're now raising constitutional issues, and there needs to be some kind of authority for them to take them and transport them. That's part of, that, that's what is, is lacking.
And then these specialized crisis intervention officers are the only ones who have the ability to make that call to take them to somewhere other than
That, that's the, that's the vision, yes, ma'am.
So a regular officer would not be able to get trained up to recognize some of these situations and then be able to transport them to like the new evil A center?
No, they would be able to get trained as, we need someone else here with that authority to be able to make the call, just like calling the M H E Ws for the mental health issues.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill twenty-five fifty-six S D two H D two relating to Community Outreach Court. First up is the Office of the Public Defender.
Hello again, Megan McDonald. So the Office of the Public Defender fully supports S B two five five six to permanently establish and appropriate funds for Community Outreach Court. We would first propose an amendment to Section three subsection two to allow the Attorney General to join in to Community Outreach Court. As it's currently written, it's just between the prosecution, the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney and the Public Defender's Office. While the A Gs don't currently have an active and participating role, they have started initiating prosecution of qualifying offenses. So we would just like to, to have a seat open and available for them should they choose to join. I don't believe this would have any effect on funding in any way. There's only one case right now that qualifies at all, so it shouldn't affect anything as far as that's concerned. It's just opening up the language to allow them to join should they want to. This also leads to our opposition of the prosecution's testimony and desire to include Section four of Act fifty-five. There's already an understanding amongst the C O C team that joint cooperation is necessary for success. The very fact that the A G now has the potential to join into C O C shows that we do need legislation that allows us to be nimble and easily shift and respond to things as they arise, including Section four of Act fifty-five has potential to stunt the organic growth of Outreach Court as it continues to expand and evolve. The language is also repetitive and unnecessary as it's already being addressed in the memorandum of understanding, as well as written within our policies and procedures of the program. I am also the deputy currently assigned to Outreach Court. I've been there since August, so if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Department of Law Enforcement.
Good afternoon again. The Department of Law Enforcement strongly supports this measure. This is one of those criminal justice reform measures that actually benefits everybody in the community, not just the individual defendant, but it also benefits their family, their friends, the community as a whole, because they're able to actually help the individual with what they really need to be able to keep them out of the criminal justice system. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Judiciary.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. Brooke Mommy, Zuko Social Services Manager and Probation Administrator. The Judiciary strongly supports S B twenty-five fifty-six and draft two, House draft two. The Judiciary respectfully requests that the effective date of July first, three thousand, on page eight, section eleven, be amended to take effect on July first, 2024. The Community Outreach Court has changed many lives. It helps struggling individuals get back on their feet, gain self-esteem, improve their living conditions, and the overall community. The Community Outreach Court goes beyond resolving legal issues. We look at social problems, we look at long-term change. The Community Outreach Court is made up of judicial clerks, bailiffs, social workers, attorneys, and judges, all of which step outside their role to give to others that need. The Community Outreach Court team connects the Judiciary Office of the Prosecuting Attorney and Office of the Public Defender alongside twenty-four service providers. This small, this is our small way of making a difference in the community. The team brings a safe and accessible link to courts, SNAP benefits, replacement IDs, employment clothing, transportation, car seats, food, housing, school supplies, and bed linens. We also assist with wound care. On March fifteenth, the Community Outreach Court and the Specialty Court jointly put on a service fair on the lanai of the Circuit Court Building. At that time, we're able to service ninety-three clients, ten of which came from the Community Outreach Court, twenty from the Specialty Court, sixty-two from probation, and one from parole. We're able to provide employment, dentistry, showers, haircuts, clothing, food, SNAP, MedQuest, and a number of different services. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Honolulu Department of the Prosecuting Attorney.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and committee members. I'm Paul Mao, Chief of Staff for the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney. I'm here in opposition, really in part, to S B two five five six S D two H D two. I want to make it clear that while the prosecuting attorney's office, we do continue to support the Community Outreach Court, but really, the main point that we want to make this afternoon is that we want to have it continue to be successful, and we believe that one of the key ingredients to success is really Act fifty-five. And in this bill, Act fifty-five is being repealed. You know, the existing Act fifty-five passed in 2017 and established this Community Outreach Court, and it set specific processes for the program. These critical processes are spelled out in Section four of Act fifty-five, and they were not included as part of S B two five five six. What we're asking for is that two five five six be amended to include the language of Section four. We do believe they are necessary to protect the community. The program under Act fifty-five, which has been a success, as everybody has testified to, allows for the disposition of cases only when the prosecuting attorney and the public defender have negotiated and reached a clear agreement on the disposition of the defendants. This agreement between the prosecuting attorney and the public defender really is what's essential to prevent the admission of inappropriate defendants into the Community Outreach Program. Specifically, what I'm talking about is these points. Currently, defendants must be nonviolent, and they must be charged with a non-felony. These are stated within Section four. We have to find that these individuals are appropriate for participation. While testifying on this bill before the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs on March twentieth, 2024, the probation administrator for the Hawaii State Judiciary, while responding to questions from Representative Ganadin, you know, about our suggested amendment, said, and I quote, "I don't see a problem with adding those specific things that the prosecutor is asking for." Now, I think what everyone kind of recognizes is the necessity for, to honor the process and to make sure that the right people, the appropriate people, are part of this program, and that we shouldn't change the formula that has worked so well for us since 2016. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, members' questions. Representative Ward.
The Judiciary is the one responsible for the court. Some of the, thank you, madam. Some of the praises that were being sung, how does the recidivism of this compare to the quote criminal justice systems recidivism? In other words, do the homeless come in and out like they do every two or three years with the criminal justices? Or you don't have recidivism statistics?
I don't have recidivism.
Because homelessness is going up. What's the, the claim to fame then that, that you're most proud of with this program?
I think that we're most proud of actually linking them into services and housing.
Is it an option when the sentencing comes? They go get rehab, or they go to?
It's not mandated, but it's part of our imporgament, yes.
How many of them choose mental health, for example? I mean, is there a percentage of how many go choose to do rehab or mental health?
We don't have statistics on that.
That would be a, that would be a big factor, being that, is it still eighty percent have some kind of a drug problem or mental problem?
On probation?
The ones that are coming through your court?
Oh, the ones that are coming through our court?
I'm not sure of that either.
No.
Sorry, I'm a metrics guy. If I don't have the numbers, I don't know how to treat the narrative, actually.
And I'm looking back at our counterpart with the public defender's office.
Who has the numbers? Because homelessness is increasing, and I'm just wondering how much you may be taking back or off of that.
So as far as anybody who has severe mental illness, any sort of severe substance abuse issues, things of that general nature, they're not admitted into the program because they have a need for what Community Outreach Court can provide. So we don't have numbers on those because we don't have participants.
They're the ones who need most of the help, though, right?
That's correct, but there are, as the prosecution prosecutor, Deputy Prosecutor pointed out, there are already policies and procedures in place that dictate who can and cannot be part of the program. Our policies and procedures lay out that you cannot have any violent offenses, you cannot have any felony offenses, you cannot have any severe mental illness needs, any severe substance abuse needs, because that just goes beyond anything that Outreach Court can provide to these individuals. So those, anybody that do have those more severe needs, we do try to hook them up with other services and other specialty courts, but they are not appropriate for Outreach Court. It goes beyond anything that we're able to provide.
So let me ask, re-ask it in a different way, which relates to former Representative Mizuno's goal, which the governor says, in three years, we will reduce homelessness by fifty percent. Are you guys going to be part of that team to help that happen? So how? How are you going to help that happen?
So we're already
Reduced by fifty percent in three years, really ambitious.
It is really ambitious. I think it's always good to have an ambitious goal, because if you have something that you just hit and move on from and kind of get bored of it, right? So we want to have something that is very ambitious. We are already, have a seat at the table, we're already part of the conversations, we're already participating in various training programs, going to different conferences, looking at what other states and everything is being done nationwide. We're, we're brainstorming together to see what we can do and how and why. Outreach Court is kind of just one component of the much larger. But it is, I think, a very necessary component because we need a variety of different services, thousands and thousands of people to help, help them get off the street.
So how many of you reduced in January and February? How, how many?
How many have graduated?
Yeah.
In January and February, there is, I want to say around thirty people were able to graduate. Our next one that we're having from Honolulu, because the, the service fair that we provided was so successful, we're anticipating another ten people graduating. And I do understand it is a little bit of a slower process, but that's taking your time to really address the needs is what helps to prevent the recidivism.
Exactly. Of those thirty people, how many may revert back into homelessness? Or you don't, you don't keep numbers on that? You should keep numbers on that if you don't.
We should. No, and I do agree with that, but given that the program's only been in existence for seven years, it's really hard to provide a really accurate
It's a long time.
If you're looking at recidivism of houselessness, though, it is, it is
But it's getting worse every year, is the point.
It is getting worse every year, and I do agree with that. But if you want more of the long-term statistics, it is something that is going to be a lot harder to give from just seven years. Try a bit more. And then COVID kind of threw a wrench into everything as well, so that will be skewing numbers a bit.
Both have a tough job. We all have a tough job with this one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, House, Senate Bill twenty-nine thirty-seven S D one, H D two relating to access to early learning. First up is the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Good afternoon, Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Makah Masuda from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We stand on our written testimony, and I will be happy to answer any questions that the committee members might have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is Executive Office on Early Learning.
Aloha Chair Yamashita and Vice Chair Kitagawa and Members of the Committee. I'm Yuko Ariko Akros, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the University of Hawaii, Kauaiu Kimura on Zoom.
I aloha nui and aluna makainana hano hano. Kauaiu Kimura here from University of Hawaii, standing on our written testimony and am available for questions if you have any. Mahalo nui.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members' questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill thirty-one ninety-one S D one H D two relating to technology transfer at the University of Hawaii. First up is University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Vice Secretary with the University of Hawaii System. We're standing in support of this bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members' questions? Okay, no questions, we're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill thirty-one twenty, thirty-one ninety-two S D one H D one relating to the University of Hawaii Research. First up is
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members, any questions? Representative Ward.
University, please. What, I can't remember one of the presidents of the University of Hawaii. This is an economic driver for the state of Hawaii. Could you give us some good numbers about how much money or innovative entrepreneurship has been created by this program?
So let me start with our exumural funding. Last year, we were more than five hundred million dollars in expenditures. This year, as the end of this month, we're again half a million, half a billion dollars, and we're gonna surpass that. We're gonna be around five hundred and fifty million dollars. We create around twelve thousand jobs, high-paying jobs. We create a couple million dollars in royalties and intellectual property. We have between six to ten startups a year from the universities, so.
You got any examples of the startups or products that we can see that, hey, this U H created this product or through its innovative
Yes, so a couple of these companies we have, one is Ho'onu Scientific. Ho'onu actually presents or manufactures sensors, ocean, ocean monitoring sensors, which we have deployed all over the United States and the world. And the other one is Spectrum Photonics. This is a hyperspectral imaging company that does landmine detection and also
That's the spectrum that does the TV, not, it's different? Or is it the same one?
No, that's different. That's a different, that's a hyperspectral company, does, uses advanced optics to do landmine detection and also to do unexploited ordinance detection.
If we didn't have this program, how much money would we be forsaking?
I would say between thirty to fifty million dollars a year.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill twenty-seven eighty-two S D two H D one relating to electronic information technology. First up is Office of Enterprise Technology Services. Yes.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. I'm Tom Koo, Operations Officer for Enterprise Technology Services. We stand by our written recommendation, we stand by our written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights on Zoom or in person.
Sorry, Marie cannot be here. She's on Maui right now, meeting with some folks there. Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Liza Ryan Gill with Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. We represent about thirty immigrant-serving and lead organizations across the pāina. We're in strong support of this bill. It's really just the first step towards our standardization of websites. If websites for the state agencies and departments are like their front desks, then we want the limited English proficient person, which is about one in four individuals in Hawaii. then we want the limited English proficient person, which is about one in four individuals in Hawaii, to be able to know exactly where they go each time they step into that new website. And DLIR has done a great job. They could be used as one example. But it is something that we'd love to see moving forward, as most of the time, people are getting their information online as opposed to going to the physical office. So we just want to create a standard. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next we have Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights.
Aloha. My name's Amy Agbayani. With the Hawaii Friends for Civil Rights, we are in strong support, and I stand by our written testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing the members, questions? Representative.
Mr. Agbayani, Dr. Agbayani, if we don't pass this bill, what would happen?
I'll get mad at you. No.
We were at East West Center together, so we don't take this personally.
Well, we think our limited English proficient communities have a right.
How big is that? How big is the community, actually?
Well, it's.
Without English proficiency? One in four households?
Four households or one hundred and sixty-one thousand people in the state. Anyhow, it's a significant number, and they are members of our community, and they have actually legal rights to have access to information and services. So this bill would help the state actually meet its mandate and make it actually cheaper. Because if you don't standardize it, then people will start, different offices will start purchasing stuff that's not going to be useful consistently. And so I think this bill is actually very, very helpful to the state.
Does that include immigrants from the southern border, or they haven't sent them here yet? Are we, and if they do, are we prepared?
We have a number of actually immigrants from various places, including the southern border. And actually, we even have some from Ukraine at this point.
Yeah, I know the whole world is kind of marching through the southern border. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill. Senate Bill twenty-two eighty-seven, SD two HD one, relating to the Office of Enterprise Technology Services. First up, we have Hawaii Office of Enterprise Technology Services.
I'm Koo. ETS stands by its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? We're going to move on to the next bill, moving on to education, relating to Senate Bill thirty-three, thirty-three oh five, SD HD one, relating to education. First up is Executive Office on Early Learning. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill twenty-two fifty-seven, SD three HD one, relating to education. First up is Hawaii Teachers Standards Board.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Felicia Villalobos. I'm the Executive Director for the Hawaii Teachers Standards Board, testifying on behalf of the board. HTSB is in support of SB two-two-five-seven, SD three HD one. We submitted written testimony. I would like to highlight that this bill would help support a career in technical education or a CTE pathway into teaching by giving individuals from the trades with years, if not decades, of experience in their trade to go into teaching, to teach their trade to students in public schools within the CTE programs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is the Department of Education. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill twenty-seventy, SD one HD one, relating to the Department of Education. First up is the Department of Education.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. I'm Tammy Chun for the Department of Education. We submitted written testimony in strong support and just wanted to note that in our testimony, we requested clarifying language with regard to the amounts that are related to the exemption.
Okay, thank you. Next is Hawaii State Energy Office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Representatives Cameron Black from the Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony and support. One of the CTE pathways is the energy pathway, and that's why we're here in support of this measure. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is State Procurement Office.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs and Member of the Committee, Boni Kalkui for the State Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments for clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, questions, members? Okay, next, we're going to move on to the next bill. Next bill, Senate Bill thirty-two zero seven, SD two HD one, relating to education. First up is. First up is Board of Education.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Warren Heruki from the Board of Education. We stand by in strong support of SB thirty-two oh seven, SD two HD one, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Okay, next is Julie Reyes Oda on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Members of the House Finance Committee. My name is Julie Reyes Oda, teacher at Nanakuli High and Intermediate, and I strongly oppose SB three-two zero seven. Here's the story of this bill. On December seventh, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Ed Human Resources Committee voted on an amendment to the Superintendent Keith Hayashi's employment contract to max him out to the cap from two hundred forty thousand to two hundred fifty thousand, when he wasn't even halfway through his contract. That motion was deferred. A little over a month later, this bill, SB three-two zero seven, was introduced in the Senate to change the superintendent's cap from two hundred fifty thousand to three hundred fifty thousand. On February second, the Senate Education Committee amended the bill and changed the cap from three hundred fifty thousand to three hundred thousand. It was explained that the current two hundred fifty thousand dollar cap would sunset on June thirtieth of this year, and that the cap would revert back to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if this bill wasn't passed. It was subsequently mentioned that this would not affect Superintendent Hayashi's pay until his contract expired next year. On February twenty-eighth, the Senate Ways and Means Committee held public decision-making. The bill was amended from three hundred thousand to no cap. The cap would be at the determination of the Board of Ed. Lastly, on March twelfth, this bill was heard in the House Education Committee, where finally, relevant questions were being asked. Those questions came from former Milani High Teacher Amy Peruso and former Nanakuli High Teacher Scott Matayoshi. What was gleaned from the questioning is that Superintendent Hayashi had not indicated he was going to leave his job, that when the superintendent's pay changes, other high-ranking DOE leaders' pay rise and fall, which means they are tied to his pay, and that Superintendent Hayashi created two additional superintendent positions, deputy superintendent positions, also a taxpayer expense, which would cause a relief in his workload and, to me, makes it unusual time to request for a pay increase for the superintendent. So if anyone in the state wants to know, what is the cap for the superintendent? The answer would be, I don't know. I'd have to go back to what WAM wrote in their committee report, that they, quote, "believe that the Board of Education is in the best position to determine the salary of the Board of Education based upon an annual performance evaluation," end quote. We all know that the Board of Ed are appointees of the governor. We also have had four different Board Chairs since twenty twenty-two, Catherine Payne, Bruce Voss, Warren Heruki, and now Roy Takumi. So the Board could essentially pay any amount out of the pockets of the DOE's budget. There has been a lack of accountability and oversight from the Board of Ed. Yes, I attend the meetings and I follow their actions. We need a board who will ask the DOE hard questions and hold them accountable, not one that reads about high employee turnover, low student achievement, inoperable fire alarms, and returning money for not following through on improvements in schools. There's no check on the Board of Ed. Board of Education members are nominated by the governor with the advice and Senate, with advice and consent of the Senate. All of this is showing a good argument to revert back to an elected Board of Ed. And maybe that way, one day, we'll see a former teacher on that board and not only former administrators. We need to keep the conversation on the lack of funding for schools and being responsible for the use of taxpayer money. Vote no on this bill or amend it to two hundred fifty thousand. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this important measure.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Vanessa Ot. Person. Okay, not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Representative.
Thank you, Chair. Board of Education, please. Hello, Chair. Does the Board, does the Board retain the services of like a compensation consultant to determine what the superintendent's salary ought to be compared to other jurisdictions and the number of students they oversee and whatnot?
Well, that's a good question. Up until now, the Board has not. But recently, I would say, two months ago, a request for proposal was sent out to exactly do as you suggest, to get an independent compensation consultant that could provide a comprehensive study of what superintendent's compensations are for both SEAs, which is State Education Authority, or LEAs, as well as look at the Hawaii cost of living and the scope of the compensation consultants. Work was also to involve not only the superintendent, but the deputy superintendents, the assistant superintendents, and the complex area superintendents. Many of them have similar positions, but they're very different in their scope and their responsibilities. So it is the hope that using an independent consultant that can factor in all of these different issues and sizing and complexity of their jobs will yield a, you know, external recommendation on what's appropriate. The Board still then would just take that advice or that report. We still have to follow an evaluation process where we set, we have set goals for the superintendent, and his goals also transcend down all the way through his direct reports and even beyond that. So we need to do the evaluation process first, look at the compensation consultant's recommendations, and there will be a two-step process for the public to comment. The first would be in the Human Resources Committee, and should it come out of the Human Resources Committee, then it goes to full board for approval.
Okay. Is it your sense that the superintendent is currently underpaid?
I wouldn't be able to say, you know, definitively with just the answer to that question. We do know that when we look at comparable salaries for similar-sized LEAs across the nation, it is his compensation, his current compensation is quite low, notwithstanding the cost of living here in Hawaii. We've also looked superficially at what the private schools in Hawaii are paying for, you know, much smaller student enrollment. And again, our current superintendent's salary of two hundred forty thousand dollars is on the low side. But the process that I described earlier is the process that the Board will take in reviewing the performance as well as then coming up with a compensation recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Representative.
You just mentioned the word "performance." What are the math and reading scores, given the national averages? Where is Hawaii, where is Hawaii students?
We covered that just very recently in a board meeting, and I would say that just broadly speaking, I don't recall the specific numbers, but the post-pandemic recovery for Hawaii, for both math and reading, has been pretty much at the top of the charts. The recovery has been great. That's not to say that we're there. We have much more work to do and a lot more progress to.
Aren't the third grade reading scores below, in our subpar, and as well as third grade math? We are below the national average considerably below.
I don't know the specifics, but we can get that information to you, but.
The point is, generally speaking, America is a meritocracy. You get promoted on the basis of what you can contribute, what you know, what you have accomplished. Why now, when we have a Maui Fire president for money, and why would we? Why would we want to take away the cap? Is two hundred fifty thousand not enough? And if we didn't do this, he was, did you say earlier he was thinking about resigning? Or somebody implied that if you don't help me out, I'm not going to stick around?
I didn't say that. The previous testifier had indicated as such.
Oh, okay, sorry. But the point is, has he accomplished to the extent that we can say, hey, you deserve it? I mean, for example, I mean, if you're the athletic director and the pay for a coach is four hundred fifty thousand dollars, but the guy you got in front of you has never won a game. So performance is what a lot of us consider what the money, the money is only significant if he's not accomplishing his job. If he's accomplishing his job and doing above, I said on the floor of the House, I give the guy a million dollars a year. But we have been underperforming in the DOE, and now we want to give him a raise? It's almost like the city council getting sixty-four percent and last week getting another three percent. People are not very happy about that.
Okay, let me, can I please clarify? This bill in and of itself does not confer a raise on the superintendent. It's looking at the cap. The process that I described in the previous question is the process that we're going to go through. At the beginning of this school year, the prior board had approved a very comprehensive six-year strategic plan, and that strategic plan has many desired outcomes and many objectives and key performance indicators. So based on that, the superintendent proposed a set of performance objectives upon which we will measure his performance. We have not yet gotten to that point. We plan to do that in the next several months. And at the end of the school year, we will evaluate his actual goals or results against those objectives that we set forth.
What is his salary right now?
Two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And he has no objectives tied to that two hundred forty thousand dollars?
No, he.
You said you're making them for the future?
We made them for this current school year.
Okay, what are the objectives? Could you give us an example?
I don't have it in front of me, but they cover the major three categories. One would be student achievement, one would be around the people, people meaning hiring, you know, qualified teachers and reducing teacher vacancies. And the third one would be about efficient and effective operations. So those are the three broad categories in which he has objectives. We did add in this year two other issues because of the situation that we're in. The two other issues are the Maui wildfires' response, as well as the facilities issues dealing with the huge capital improvement, budget lapsing, as well as the backlog in repairs and maintenance and deferred maintenance. But those are the general areas of the, his objectives for this school year.
And you heard one of our teachers saying that he has offloaded some of his responsibility, creating some other individuals that take over some of his responsibilities, creating even more expensive administration?
My understanding is that those additional positions were created over a year or so ago. And I would tell you this much, that having those additional deputies is of a significant benefit to the superintendent, because otherwise, his span of control, meaning the number of people that would report to him, would be quite overwhelming. He is, he has so many roles and responsibilities to undertake. So having a, what is called a standbreaker in between with these additional deputies is a huge help.
Again, the question I ask first, why now and why the amount? We have Maui and other fiscal overriding responsibilities. So why are you bringing it this year?
One of the main reasons why this thing came up, as I understand it, is that there is a sunset provision, because the previous cap was one fifty and was raised to two fifty. And there's a provision here that sunsets that at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. If that sunset provision is not made permanent, I mean, it continues, then there's a lot of ramifications on the deputies, the assistant superintendents, and the complex area superintendents, because there's a statute, Section three oh two A six twenty-one, that says nobody can be paid higher than the superintendent. So if it reverts back from two fifty to one fifty, then automatically, all of those incumbents in those positions that I mentioned, deputies, assistant superintendents, complex area superintendents, would face pretty much an immediate pay cut.
What are the deputy superintendents paid?
It varies based on their objectives, but I would say. It varies based on their objectives, but I would say between 175 to 200.
They don't have a cap, or do they have a cap also? As long as it's under the superintendent?
They don't have a specific cap, the statutory. The Board reviews their evaluation, and the Board approves the salaries or increases for the deputies, assistant superintendents, and the complex area superintendents.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you. Any further questions? Representative Kobayashi, followed by.
So one way of solving this problem is just to remove the sunset date from June 30th to sometime, say, one or two years in the future.
You could, you could do that, I mean.
Keep the cap.
Keep the cap at 250. That's an alternative.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative Portoi.
Thank you. You mentioned that, based on the national average, the superintendent is paid on the lower end. Are, are teachers compared to the national average also paid on the lower end?
I don't have that information with me.
Okay, I think that they are.
Okay.
And my other question was similar to Rep. Kobayashi. If it would be more appropriate to just leave it at 250,000 rather than removing the cap? And I just wanted to see if you were supportive of that.
I would say this much, that the $250,000 cap should be considered to be removed, and the discretion should be left with the Board of Education. The Board of Education does have the statutory authority to set the superintendent's salary. In the future, having that cap may hinder the recruitment of a future superintendent. And the 150 was 10 years ago, and it was bumped up by $100,000 to get to the current 250 level. So if we're doing, if we're leaving a cap in there, the cap should be able to withstand, you know, a period of time versus having to come back to the legislature to constantly try to modify or adjust the cap.
Okay, thank you. Just one more question to clarify. Did you say that the superintendent proposes their own performance evaluation measures?
The performance evaluation measures were proposed by the superintendent and provided to the committee and the Board for our review and approval, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have some questions just on the Board's role in just setting the salary. So what is your, what kind of analysis or factors do you guys do to set his salary?
The process that we're doing right now is, we do, we set the objectives at the beginning of the school year. Come the end of the school year, we review the performance against those objectives. And up until now, the compensation changes or increases have been recommended by the department. And in response to Representative Garrett's question earlier, we did issue an RFP to get an independent compensation consultant. So we would then use that.
Has there ever been a time where the Board decreased the superintendent's salary?
I'm not familiar because of my tenure, no.
Okay, so I guess how involved was the Board with regards to the, you know, $400 million or $500 million of lapses that the DOE had proposed to do at the beginning of this session?
I mean, to be honest, we were not aware of the, that amount of lapsing.
Okay, so if you weren't, if the Board wasn't aware of certain things going on, how can you guys really evaluate the superintendent's performance?
I think since we came upon that discovery, we have tried to shore up a lot of the governance processes and improve communications. In terms of the CIP issue, we have that as a monthly standing item for the Finance and Infrastructure Committee to be on top of. So we don't get into that same, I would say, embarrassing situation that we had before.
So is it the Board's inclination this year, given what has happened to lower his salary, based on that?
We didn't make that tie. What we're doing is we're trying to ensure that this large lapse that is to occur on June 30, 2024, there's going to be the next tranche that happens in June 30, 2025. So we want to make sure we're getting ahead of that, so we don't have another huge.
My concern is that this doesn't happen all of a sudden.
Correct.
It takes months or years to lapse $500 million of projects. And only now the Board has put something in place, maybe. But what is, we don't know what's on the horizon. And then for you guys to have never lowered his salary and now just can set whatever you want is really concerning for me.
Not familiar with the history, but for the current superintendent, the salary that he is being paid now is the same salary that was initially agreed upon when he became superintendent. We do have a specific objective in terms of the CIP as something to measure him for this current school year. So I think part of your concern, we will be addressing in that process. But like I said, from a proactive governance standpoint, we have a standing agenda item each month in the Finance and Infrastructure Committee to look at how they're doing on CIP. Because what we have seen so far is that the monthly progress has not been fast enough to complete the amount of projects that the legislature has appropriated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You, Representative Board.
Thank you, Chair. Did I hear you correctly when you said that the Board does not set the performance measures for the superintendent, but the superintendent sets those, or did I miss?
The superintendent proposed them, but the Board reviewed and approved them, and we did make modifications.
Why is it that way, in the tail wagging the dog, so to speak?
Well, we have a, we have a strategic plan. So he had to propose a set of objectives that moved the Department in concert with the stated objectives, desired outcomes of the strategic plan. So the previous Board had done that part, which is, I think, one of the main roles and responsibilities of the Board. So he had to simply follow that.
Okay, thank you. Chair, can I ask the teacher from Nanakuli a question? Are you still there, madam?
Yes, I am.
Teacher from Nanakuli. Come in, Nanakuli.
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, you are there.
I am.
You mentioned the efficacy of the governor's appointed Board versus the elected. Could you elaborate a bit on how you think the present system is not working, and we need some advice from you?
Well, the, what I mentioned specifically was that I think that there were, I don't know if it was bills or resolutions in the past that was trying to get teachers on the Board. And right now, teachers can't get on the Board. I don't know that that, they would be barred, or future teachers, but I don't know if that, or, sorry, retired teachers. I don't know if that they would be barred in the future if it became appointed, probably just because there's conflicts that come up with the Board's decisions. But I don't see that we have really a, a former teacher, like a former retired teacher, not, not a teacher turned into administrator, turned into a DOE higher up, but just a regular teacher who retired after 30 years, or 35 years, or 25 years as a teacher, who sits on the Board that can tell you the ins and outs of being in a classroom for that long. And I think that's the part that's important.
Excuse me for interrupting. My question is whether it's elected or appointed, the efficacy of those two, which you, as a teacher, probably see it up front and close. It's elected versus appointed. That was the question.
Okay, I think that the efficacy would probably be that if they were to make bad decisions, like pay the superintendent something that the taxpayers didn't like, they could vote people out of office. I think that would probably be what would be the option. Right now, they don't have any option. They just have to keep rolling it the way that they do it.
Thank you for teaching our kids. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the final bill, moving on to Senate Bill 2475ST2, HD2 relating to education. First up is Executive Office on Early Learning.
Aloha, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kiragawa, and members of the committee. Yoko Ariko across, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. Protecting children against harm is paramount for the Executive Office on Early Learning, and we stand in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Hawaii Teachers Standards Board. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Department of Education. Thank you, Office of the Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kiragawa, members, and Horiuchi, Department of the Attorney General. The House draft two of the bill added a provision that the Department of Education may share information from the Harm to Students Registry with the Department of Human Services. As noted in our testimony, DHS is not an educational agency or an educational institution that employs teachers. As such, this provision may fall beyond the single scope or the single subject of the bill's title, which is education. In our testimony, we've provided some suggested wording that we think will address that concern. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hawaii Association of Independent Schools. Present. Okay, next up is Punahou School.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I'm Mike Latham, President of Punahou School and Chair of the HIAS Governance Committee. The bill addresses a very serious student safety concern. By creating a registry, it intends to stop perpetrators of abuse at Hawaii public, private, and charter schools from moving from one institution to another where they can continue to prey on children. It covers employees as well as volunteers. The bill's provisions require that schools conduct an investigation, declare a finding, give notice to a perpetrator, report the name of the perpetrator to a registry, consult that registry whenever hiring. And then if the individual is on the registry, they are prevented from hiring that person. It also includes substantial due process provisions requiring investigation and appeals. I wanted to thank the superintendent and his DOE colleagues for their collaboration, the Attorney General's Office for their careful review and partnership. I'm confident that together we can take steps that will help keep Hawaii's children safe in our schools. Thanks to the committee for their consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, members, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, members, questions? Representative Board.
Is, being that you're in the private sector, you mean, or may or may not know, is KSBE for this bill also?
They are in support. In fact, yeah, Kamehameha Schools has submitted testimony in support of the bill. My own view is it's long overdue. I don't know why it hasn't been done earlier. It does take some coordination and some careful planning, but my sense is that it's something we certainly do need. That's correct. Private schools, public schools, and charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, okay, members, we're going to recess for decision-making, and then we'll go into our next agenda. We're going to recess for about 20, 30 minutes. Recession.
Okay, we're gonna convene the committee on finance for our second agenda. Members and members of the audience, we're gonna defer decision-making on Agenda 1 and 2 to the end of calendar. So, we're gonna move on to, right now, Agenda 2. First up is Senate Bill 2600 HD1 relating to condominiums. First up is Hawaii Realtors. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 2170 SD1 HD1 relating to combat sports. First up is Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs.
Hello, Chair, I'm Shita and members of the committee, I'm James Kizuski. On behalf of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, here to stand on our written testimony and here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Martin Han.
Hello, thank you for having me today. I'm Martin Han and we're representing on behalf of NOKonet. We stand in our written testimony on supporting this bill and I'll be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is individual by the name of John Anzu.
Hello, everyone, thank you for this time. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Awesome, okay. So, I am, I just recently read the DCCA's goal in regards to their involvement, right, is to promote a strong and healthy business environment while protecting the community from unfair and deceptive business practices, right? And I understand that's a great goal to accomplish, but over the past 12 years, as you folks partake in the involvement of combat sports, we have went from over 100 shows per year to five to 10 shows per, in the past few years. So, would you guys, would you guys say that the aftermath of the state's involvement count towards promoting that strong and healthy business? I would say no. And so, I would say it underscores the need for a new approach. So, I urge you guys to support this bill so that the initiatives will help us to contribute in the revitalization of combat sports before it's too late. You know, it's one of the building blocks of Hawaii, the Hawaiian spirit, warrior spirit is built in us, you know, and that's what changed my life, it transformed my life and I highly and urge you folks to really consider this so that you can have the individuals that has their hands on the ground, that has business background, that knows the struggles that is a part of this industry can kind of foster this revitalization effort. And I also wanna stand on my testimony that I also written and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Walter Cavallo.
Good afternoon, Representative Kylie Amshita and distinguished members of this committee, Walt Cavallo from the Big Island here, one of the guys who initiated this, the bill from the start. I was here last year, so, hi again. The bill was suspended for, to meet with the DCCA privately, to try to work on some things that never panned out. And the farther I look into this, the worse it becomes. The shows were 144 shows, to be exact, and when they took over, it went down to 27 the first year. Last year, there was two shows, this year, there's nothing scheduled. So, we definitely have an issue that needs to be addressed. By combining the boxing and the MMA commission, boxing hasn't done anything since Brian, since Brian Valoria fought here in 2016, that's 14 years ago. 14 years of failure there, 12 years of failure here does not make something work. We need to start this new commission and self-sustain, so we're not asking for funding in any way. We want to self-sustain this by taking in fees for licensing, just like the DCCA has for the last 12 years, but be transparent about where the money is being spent and where it is that we are helping our own community with that funding, instead of using it in an appropriated fund to pay for whatever may be out there. I stand in strong, very strong testimony as it was passed over from the last house over with our amendment attached to it by keeping the two commissions apart so that we can fix one problem first before we try to drag another one along with us to make something work. Two failures cannot make a right, we have to fix this. If not, the combat sports in Hawaii is gonna fail, it's going to fail. Thank you so much. I have, any questions, I'm all day. You can just ask me, I have, I can answer anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is David Padilla.
Oh, he's coming right now, he's a military police officer, so he's running a little back from, got his way.
Okay, fine then. All right, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Okay, Mr. Cavallo, yeah, could you come forward? Okay, so, one of the issues is we set up, we stood up this other commission, is the cost to stand up the commission, the start-up costs that may take additional funds to start up, so...
No.
Yeah, well, this is what the DCCA is telling us, so, with that, they're asking us to, if we push this forward, to put some general funds to get to start it up, right? And then, then it can become self-sustaining at some point in time.
Well, can I, can I answer, can I answer that? So, when the DCCA took over this program, there was no startup funds. What they did was they took in licensing fees, so, they, last year, they collected over...
Let me finish my question then.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, the, because they're saying that the, they need money to start up, is it okay with you if they collect fees until there is a corpus to be able to start it up and then start the process to commission place?
Well, the thing with me is, you know, having the bill not start till 2040 or what have you, and I'm not sure how that whole political thing works and you make the adjustment, but to start up this thing right at the beginning of the new year before they collect licensing fees for the next two years, so now, if they...
No, I'm asking the question differently.
Okay.
So, can they collect the licensing fee before they start up the commission?
Can we start, collect?
No, no, can DCCA start up the fee before they start up the licensing? Because there needs to be a corpus of funds in place before they start it up. So, would you guys be open to that or not?
Well, I don't, I don't see where the fees shouldn't go to the commission and not to the DCCA.
Well, the commission is under the DCCA, so it's, it's under the Compliance Resolution Fund, which is a self-funding mechanism.
Okay.
So, it will not go anywhere else but to the commission, but what I'm asking is that it, instead of putting in general funds...
Right.
But, we assess fees until there's enough to start it up and then put the licensing in place.
If, yes, if the fees are being collected and put into the Combat Sport Commission, which will allow us to get the thing started, then yes, but if the fees are going to somewhere else...
It, it, under DCCA, it has to go for the specific...
Yeah, I, listen, I have several businesses I run in Hilo, they were zero startups. I have a nonprofit that's been running for 30 years, I started with nothing, it's a very, very...
All I'm saying is that if they're gonna require us to put general funds, that this body will not put in general funds, so, it has to have its own source to start it up.
Yeah. So, I'm, whatever it takes to get this thing through is, I'm with it, I'm 100% with it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else, any questions?
Chair, can I follow up that question with that last statement? Are you saying we can become national and world champions if we pass this bill?
I, I'm gonna tell you this, in the next five years, I'm going to shock Hawaii if this thing goes through by bringing some of the biggest events here and producing some of the greatest talent that we have hidden here in Hawaii without having them have to leave to go to the mainland to train and fight because we don't have anything going on here. I have a little event in Hilo that I've been doing and Senator and a few other people have come out to it. It's called the Next Generation and that's what it is. My heart is in this, I've been doing this since 94 when I moved here. I started with the Boxing Commission, they were fighting amongst each other, that doesn't work for me. You cannot get a positive out of people that don't wanna have one guy run the thing. Too many chiefs and not enough Indians. It's gotta be a positive thing. What we're trying to do now is re-establish the combat sports here in Hawaii, which is, the talent here is amazing, we just need to rebuild this.
So, what can we expect? You said we're gonna be shocked, what's gonna be the shock?
Oh, I'm gonna bring all the big shows here, you have no idea.
Where are you gonna, where are you gonna locate them?
Well, we're gonna, well, in the next five years, when we generate these fighters, we're gonna, hopefully, that Aloha Stadium will bring a lot more money to Aloha Stadium if that goes through.
You mean the Ching Field is gonna have MMA fighting at Ching Field, the U-H?
Well, so, so, I'm not sure where that is right now, but my dream was to establish the next five years, the next Max Holloway's and Yancey Maderis's and so on, and when that thing opens up, we bring something here that generates hundreds of thousands of dollars. Dana White just posted yesterday, at the gate on Saturday, they took in $14 million at the gate. That's not even counting pay-per-view. One show like that in Hawaii will generate tons of money for all the local businesses and the hotels and the restaurants and people don't come to Hawaii for the Pro Bowl and stay one day, they stay a whole week. They'll do the same thing when the UFC or 1FC or any of the big shows come here, they'll stay a whole week. You make a vacation out of it and you bring money to the state. I'm all about bringing money to the state, I'm not asking for money, let me show you how to generate it within ourself, that's what I wanna do. I wanna make this thing work on its own without asking for anything.
Thank you. Chair, may I ask him one last question?
Please.
How are MMA fighters from Wainai doing?
Wainai is, they have some things that they have to work on out there, they're, they're, I think Yancey's probably a couple of fights left and, you know, he's had a baby and so he's, he's not really moving that much. Brother Ray Cooper is coming up, his little brother is coming up a little bit, Max Holloway has a big fight coming up, Jason with Justin Gagey, but there's nothing else.
Could Max win? I mean, where he is...
It's a tough fight, it's a very tough fight, I'm gonna, you know, I gotta stay with my boy, he was with me from when I was, when he was a kid, I had, I took him to his first fight at 13 years old.
Have you ever taught them, you ever taught them the self-confidence you've distributed and demonstrated here in this Finance Committee hearing?
You know, when, just like I say with my kids, when they reach a certain age, they go off on their own, they, they, you know, you can, you can groom them all the way to here and then they make a hard, right, a hard left.
I like your confidence about economic development and diversification, we need that really, really bad.
That's what we're planning on doing, I'm tired of watching failure. When I go to the other big shows around the world and I mention Hawaii, they go, ah, you know, because we're not even established, we're not even recognized, the, one of the biggest talented pools in the world, we're not even recognized by anybody because we don't even have a commission, we don't have, you got people, inspectors at the show, they work at a coffee shop during the day, they don't even know what they're doing there. We need to establish a legitimate commission, then we'll be respected and then the world will come. Who wouldn't wanna fight in Hawaii? My God, I have the show coming up next month, you're all welcome to come, it's at the Hilo Civic, it's a junior division event, and I have kids coming from Utah, Colorado, Las Vegas, San Jose, Sacramento, and they fly in on their own dollar to compete on this junior division event because it's in Hawaii. Who doesn't wanna compete in Hawaii?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
I have a follow-up question. So, the department is asking, requesting for 251,000 amount, so, for, and for three FTEs. So, how long will the, will you folks be able to raise that amount of money though, to stand it up?
You know, I don't know who's asking to rate, to, for this money and stuff from the, I'm coming in here saying I don't need anything, let me run this thing and I'll show you how to establish money within by collecting fees and it stays here, by collecting a flat fee from each event, bringing back all the small shows. You figure, if we had 144 shows, there was 35 promoters. Every weekend, there was a show at Hawaiian Bryant's, Dole Cannery, Phil Common, if you're, any of you have been in the fight game...
So, how much money did that, how much money did that generate, those, all those shows that you just mentioned?
Well, I can tell you that by the numbers that the DCCA gave us in a private meeting last year, or the year before, they took in $34,000 in licensing fees, okay? In one year. Now, that's with just a small amount of fighters and coaches and rest of their, they're registering. We will double that because when I bring the little events back, there'll be a lot more people signing up. They're not fighting now because there's no events. Why would you pay a licensing fee to, to not compete at all? It's like signing up for Little League and never playing a game for two years because the fees are for two years, the licensing fees that they're collecting. You have to have somewhere for me to dance if I'm gonna pay to go to a dance, right? I'm not gonna sit at home and spend this money for nothing. I wanna establish this on our own, I have the right people to help me, they're all retired, ex-professional, some world champion fighters that are willing to do this voluntarily to get this thing back to where it needs to be.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. DCCA, so if, if it had to be self-funded and you had to assess licensing fees at the beginning, how long, how long would it take?
Um, it really depends. That $34,000 number was, it includes Bellator who comes here and all their fighters are professional. If they don't come back, I mean, that's gonna drastically reduce the amount of licensing fees we're creating because these local shows that we're having, there's four, four pro fighters, so, it's just a fraction, we don't, the amateurs aren't charged licensing fees, we ensure that they're medically cleared to fight and we, we provide additional medical checks at these, at the events, but we don't charge them licensing fees, they are exempt.
So, they would not be a source?
It would, it would take a while. I can't say a specific number because maybe Bell, it all depends on the events and if there's these bigger shows that Bellator, whoever comes, then there will be a large influx of licensing fees, but unless we get something large like that, it will definitely take a long time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next measure, moving on to Senate Bill 3220 HD2, SD2 HD1 relating to motor carriers. First up is Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Melissa Ramon Johnson for the department will stand on her testimony and support, available for questions.
Thank you. Next up is the PUC. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next one, House, Senate Bill 2943 SD2 HD1 relating to workforce development. First up is State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Not here. Okay, next is Department of Education. Okay, Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Melissa Ramon Johnson for the department will stand on her testimony and support.
Okay, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? No questions. Okay, moving on to the next one, Senate Bill 3183 SD2 HD2 relating to road usage charge program. First, I skipped one? Oh, I'm sorry. 3242 SD1 HD1 relating to transportation. 3242, come on. Okay, first up is Department of Transportation.
Will stand on her testimony and support.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, members? Okay?
Chair, are we on the EV?
Not yet.
No.
Sorry. Okay, any questions, members? Okay, we're gonna, now, we're gonna move on to that bill, we're gonna move on to Senate Bill 3183 SD2 HD2 relating to road usage charge program. Okay, first up is State, Hawaii State Energy Office. Okay, first up is, uh, State, Hawaii State Energy Office. Thank you very much. Next up is, uh, Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair. Will stand on our testimony and support. Um, I have Mindy Kimora to answer any questions online as well.
I appreciate that. Okay, next up is Ulupono. Thank you. Next up is State, uh, State Foundation, Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Uh, we will stand on a written testimony and be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next is Alliance for Automotive Innovation. Okay, not present. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Representative Board.
I think it's DOT, but I'm looking for some metrics on the average mileage per vehicle, either from the North Shore, Waianae or Hawaii Kai. Does anyone have those numbers? Or the DOT, this is your baby, right? Maybe I should ask you these questions.
Yes. Representative, I have Mindy Kimora on and hopefully she can answer some of those questions for you. Mindy?
How did you arrive at $50? And, oh, no, sorry, let me back up. What is the average number of miles? Insurance companies would have this, that the average driver in Hawaii drives. And then what is the amount of state tax for every gallon of gas that they buy? I'm trying to do the math.
Hi, yes, Mindy Kimora with the Hawaii State DOT. Um, so on average from our, the insurance statistics, we look at, um, uh, Hawaii residents driving around 9,000 to 10,000 miles per year. Um, and then there's also a point to how we calculated the $50 for the flat, um, fee, which matches the existing EV surcharge that is currently in place now. Um, this fee of fuel tax is at 16 cents per gallon as of now.
Chair, I'm not sure that I, either where I'm sitting or whether the garbled part is for other people. I don't really understand what she said.
Yeah, it wasn't very clear.
Oh, okay. All, all I heard was 10,000 miles, but the point, how much per gallon do we pay already in state taxes? 15 cents, 20 cents? I mean, the state's got, city's got it, fed's got it. My point is, it's gotta be more than $50 a year and the EV guys are getting a big break by this and I want to see what the logic of that is. I know we're pushing EVs, we give them free parking at the air, or we used to give them free parking at the airport. And we've got probably all the manufacturers in Detroit, if they don't produce EVs, the carbon emissions are gonna be so severe, they have to do that. So we don't have the metrics, but what did she say about, could we try once more to, why the $50 and how did you arrive at it? Could you do it again and maybe make it a little more clear, clear?
Yeah, so the state fuel tax is set at 15 cents per gallon right now. The $50 cap was set to match the existing $50 EV surcharge that is currently in place. Um, and it's just for the off-year period.
Yeah, you're still breaking up. We're still getting a hard time hearing you.
Uh, okay, Chair, I don't do math in public, but if it's 15 cents a gallon and people drying, driving from those for face, outstation places, they gotta be paying more than $50 a year. In terms of fairness and equity, I'd like to see their formularic logic, uh, really vote on this. Thank you and thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any further questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill. Senate Bill 2443 SD2 HD2 relating to highway safety. First up is, uh, Department of Transportation.
Afternoon again, Chair. Will stand on our testimony and support. I have Lee Nagano on if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to, uh, Honolulu Police Department on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. This is Major Stacey Antonak of Honolulu Police Department's Traffic Division. HPD supports, uh, Senate Bill 2443 and I'll be available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Ulupono. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next measure, moving on to Senate Bill. Senate Bill 2159 SD2 HD1 relating to food sustainability. First up is, uh, Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha, Chair. Members of the committee, Kaila E. Nixon with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We support the measure. We are asking for an amendment adding on, um, community-based subsistence fishing areas, CBSFAs, into Section 2, I believe it's under Subsection 2, the, um, under research on the agriculture and economic impact that freshwater and saltwater aquatic organisms have on a food self-sufficiency in the state, including their impact on. I'll be available for any questions. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Next, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Thank you. Okay, next up is Department of Ag. Okay, thank you. Next up is Farm Bureau.
Chair, members of the committee, Brian Yamal here of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We'll stand on a written testimony and support.
Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the next bill. Senate Bill 2079 HD1 relating to the import, importation of plants and animals. First up is, uh, Department of Ag. Okay, thank you. Uh, Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony and support.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, questions, members? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the next bill.
Chair, my hand wasn't high enough.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I wanna know how much money we're gonna save by doing this electronic record. Do you have any numbers? I, I gather the premise is for convenience and money savings. Is that not correct? Why we wanna do this electronically?
Yeah, Jonathan Ho, Department of Agriculture Plant Quarantine Branch. So, um, the intent is to, um, save money. Um, at this point, um, we've been working with the, um, carriers and, um, we're trying to implement a pilot phase for this to really see, um, the actual, um, dollar amounts that are gonna potentially be saved for this with regards.
How much does it cost you now, not being electronic?
So for the, for the plant quarantine branch, um, right now it's just the labor. Um, the, um, DBED does all of the actual costs in terms of the processing of the, the back portion of the form and printing of the form.
This does include the guys arriving on the airplane or does it include also?
Uh, anyone entering the state, um, from the continental United States would.
So in United Airlines flight, you pick up your phone and tell the stewardess, I, I've already filled out the form?
The, yes. So I think the actual mechanism in terms of how do you get it done, um, I think is really, I think the meat and potatoes of it. I think there's no question that using a digital form, um, especially, you know, everybody's so used to it now, is kind of the way to go. It's just really, how does that look, um, for, um, the passengers? And then for, um, us making sure that it's, um, you know, we're not necessarily impeding, uh, the airline's ability to do what they need to do as well in terms of checking people in and things like that. That's really where the challenge is now.
How would you enforce it if it's electronic?
So, um, right now, the, so one of the things is the statute does, um, the statute allows for like families to fill out the form. So getting on like, you know, you know, barring, I think, you know, doing something similar to customs where, you know, you have to give me the form and check every single person, um, that's not really feasible. So right now, getting a digital form, you'll have more time to really determine about the pest, the percentage of people that are filling out the forms and then coming up with a compliance structure to ensure people are doing it beforehand. And I think that's, that, that's really the bigger challenge right now.
Is it proprietary or can you say of the thousands upon thousands of, uh, monthly visitors, how many actually have contraband or something that they actually admit to on that form?
So, um, on every flight, we get things declared. Um, the vast majority of it are things that can be, can enter the state provided they're subject to inspection, you know, apples, oranges, um, you know, essentially food for consumption. Um, we probably on a daily basis will get things that cannot come in without special require, um, that don't have special, that don't meet the requirements for entry, radishes, some kind of, a lot of passion fruit, kind of obscure pineapple, things like that. Um, that happens on a daily basis. And then, um, you know, I think there's no real good way of, I think, managing the, I guess, that outreach component of people seeing the form and going, hmm, yeah, I'm just not gonna bring anything. Cause a lot of people do do that now.
What about the, do they ever declare they have a snake in their, in their?
Um, not a snake specifically. Um, we have had other people declare, um, other non-domestic animals that can be entered. Um, we've had, um, hermit crabs, things like that.
You have a very important job, particularly when the red ants and all the other ones come and hit the farmers. I know you guys are into that minutia, but it's very serious about what we are doing in terms of all of these.
Absolutely.
Pandemics of the bugs. Thank you very much for what you do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Representative?
So this affects only the declaration form for passengers flying in?
Yes.
It doesn't affect shipments? Cargo, containers?
No, yeah, there, there's no requirement for a declaration for that.
Thank you.
Like this, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Representative?
Um, right now, who reviews the forms?
Us, we do.
You do?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm inclined not to believe that because I've seen people write on it, call me at this number. I have illegal contraband I'm bringing in. I, I don't think there's any follow-up on the forms.
If you, um, if you have, um, situations like that, I'd like to know about it so that we can follow up to make sure that that is, that that is not happening. Cause if that is happening, that's a problem on our side.
Okay, I can tell you it's happening. I've seen people do it.
Okay.
So I, I guess I'll ask again, who reviews the forms?
So we do and, you know, we, we take stuff away. So, um, I, I, that, that, I guess I'm looking at that particular situation and, you know, got, um, whether it was overlooked or, um, you know, obviously there was negligence. I'd like to make sure that that's not happening, if that is happening.
Okay, I guess I'll ask a follow-up question. Who verifies that everyone on the plane fills out a form?
So it's quite hard to, to, to do right now because of the way that the statute is written in that it allows for a one family member, adult family member to fill out for a family. And the criminal penalty, for all intents and purposes, really stops you from detaining everybody and holding them to ensure that every person has the form filled out.
Okay, but do you, after, you know, the flight de-planes and you collect the forms, do you compare the forms you've collected to the flight manifest to ensure?
We don't get a manifest from the airlines.
Okay, so how do you really verify that everyone even filled out the form?
There really isn't a, a perfect way to do it with regard, so, so any type of regulation that has passive compliance, uh, or, uh, the compliance component in to compel people to do it is really, um, the meat and potatoes of any type of regulation like that. And one of the things specifically for this would be, um, like using detector dogs, which, um, you know, we have limited ability for right now.
Okay, I mean, I guess, so even if we roll out this electronic program, if we're not doing, like, is there gonna be additional safeguards in place to make sure that everyone's filling out the form or are we gonna run into the same problems?
So.
Can I answer that? Okay, so the pilot program we're doing is the electronic form and that will be done upon check-in. Whether you check in at the airport with your family of four, whether you check in on your phone, you won't be able to get on the plane without declaring, without filling that form. So we hope to fill that gap with the electronic check-in. Some people check in from home, some people, you know, so we hope to capture everyone because you have to check in. Now, the pilot program is through the airlines, so the airlines are right now deciding what database to use cause everybody uses their own system, right? We had that meeting. And so they're trying to get a uniform, what system will feed into Jonathan or to plant quarantine so that they can look at it ahead of time and target certain passengers that have declared. Um, so.
Okay.
Hopefully that answers a little bit of where the gaps are right now that we hope to seal with the electronic version.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions, members?
Can I follow up with, uh, Madam Heard?
Oh, sure, Representative.
So that means the flight attendants wouldn't have to do anything then?
That is correct.
That is clever. I mean, they probably love that. But the issue of compliance electronically before you get on, it'll register in the airline's computers?
Yes, um, but the, everybody has their own system, right? Delta has their system, American has theirs, United has theirs. So the problem that the plant quarantine manager Jonathan has is how do we capture all that from all the different airlines reporting?
I thought this would be decreasing the amount of compliance, but from what you just said, it may increase it by huge amounts.
We think so, right? Yeah, we think so.
Very good. And it's gonna save you money.
No more paper?
Thank you.
Okay, um, could, uh, Director, could you stay there one more second? Any further questions? Okay, so I, so is this in coordination with DBED, with REIT?
It's DOT, um, DBED has their own form, right?
It's on the same form. It's on the other side.
The only one that's required is the.
It's optional.
Yeah, so the other side is optional.
So it's, uh, so it's not gonna, it's still gonna be paper?
We know.
I'm, I'm not certain specifically what, um.
Yeah, because that, that's the, um, statistical information that the states gathers to do, well, you know, to figure out what, what tourists are doing, what they're spending, how long they're staying.
Chair, the last meeting that we went to, I think was the same meeting. Um, DBED did say that they would like to have a, a portion of the check-in. Uh, they decided, they, they did a time, they timed it. The longest time to fill out the backside of the form was four minutes. The quickest was like a minute. And having been an airline employee for 25 years in the past, a minute is a long time at check-in. You know, you pretty, pretty much, so we're trying to figure out another way that they can fill out the backside of the form, um, optionally, but maybe with a carrot being a discount coupon or some sort of a prize at the end. Because the only part of the form that's required by the airlines and the Department of Ag is the front, the one question, none of the above.
None of the above, or check it off.
But we're working on it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's kind of an important part. So, you know, and, um, yeah, and, and it's, it's the information that the state uses to determine a lot of things as far as tourism and with how the numbers work. And my concern would be that if there's not a mandatory reason for you to even look at the document, that less people will be filling it out and the, the information will be not as effective. Anyway, I think it's something that should be addressed. Okay, any further questions? Okay, members, we'll move on to the next bill.
Chair, can, can you in the committee report note what you just did? A very important question that's not answered?
Yeah, well.
That would be, I mean, I know we're not in DM, but what you bring up is very important. Cause if we lose that HTA data.
It's, it's more an offline thing just because it's not part, first of all, it's not part of the title of the bill. So I think it's something that you guys would just have to follow up on. Okay.
No amendments. You can't amend the bill to say you must retain the tourism.
Titles do now.
Girl, okay.
Okay.
That's almost as important as the other Ag information.
Exactly. Okay, okay, thank you very much. We're moving on to the next, uh, measure. Uh, Senate Bill 3365 SD2, SD2 HD1 relating to, I did that part, sorry. Moving on to the next page. Senate Bill 2362 HD1 HD1 relating to ornamental ginger.
No, the bottom one.
I was on the right one. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Sorry. Okay, Senate Bill 3365 SD2 HD1 relating to plant care component. Okay, first up is Department of Agriculture.
Jonathan Ho, Department of Agriculture, Plant Quarantine Branch. Yeah, the department stands on his written testimony, um, in support and offering some, um, comments. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Miamoda here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support. Chair, we are requesting that the measure be amended to require that all containers are treated upon arrival and at state certified, or State Department of Ag certified facilities before being released. And we're also requesting that this be done within a one-mile proximity of the harbor. Again, we're just trying to reduce the potential spread of invasive species. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. And if anyone else wishing to testify on the measure, okay, questions, Members? Representative Kobyashi?
Department of Agriculture, quickly. How are you going to enforce this? Inspecting woodchips and other things where I guess the little invasive species are hiding.
Right, so we work with the transportation, oh, sorry, Jonathan Hall, Department of Agriculture, Plant Quarantine Branch. So we work with the transportation carriers now for regulated goods to conduct inspections. So we already do inspections for a lot of these products, the filter socks, not necessarily, but working with, you know, Matson and Pasha to add these to the things that they would flag for us wouldn't necessarily be an issue, and then we would obviously dispatch inspectors to do the inspections.
So woodchips are a big carrier of these invasive species?
Yep, I mean, you know, coconut rhinoceros beetles.
Chips, compost, and filter socks.
Yeah, the, the filter socks are, are, those three types of goods basically comprised of the same material.
What material, what percentage of the invasive species come on board with these guys? Do the fire ants come on board with these guys or the koki frogs or the?
They.
Rhinoceros beetles?
Those, the, those, these goods can transport those particular pests. So the intent is, right, to, to implement a treatment program that would basically, you know, counteract that possibility.
This bill is long overdue, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Department of Ag. Anybody, any further question? Okay, so, you know, these types of bills that, these types of bills that requires the Department of Ag to do some, the treatment and things like that, there, there's a cost to that.
Correct.
Yeah, so what is that?
So, so right now for inspections done on regular time, the cargo fee would, was, would cover some of the costs. We have the ability to charge fees for inspections that are conducted off-site. So depending on, on, on the structure, so there's a way to recoup the cost right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further question, Representative Kobyashi?
But is there enough to do also the off-site inspection that Farm Bureau talks about?
So.
For treatment?
So, so for example, one of the, the issues is, right now, I don't really know specifically how many people will be treating prior to entry or at entry. If they're, if they're treating prior to entry, there's really no real impact for us because basically we'll still do the inspection, the certificate of treatment will be, will be with the treatment, will be with the container, and we can do the release. So we're doing that already. If we're going to have to go.
Are you, are you confident that you can trust the certificate of treatment?
Yeah, so we're using licensed, we only accept certificate of treatments from licensed fumigators. Yeah, that's not dumb.
Thank you.
Okay, you went too fast, I still need you.
I'm skeptical.
Okay, and any further questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next bill. Senate Bill 2362 H D one, H D one relating to ornamental ginger. First up is Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Darciu Ishi, Hawaii Department of Ag, Plant Pest Control Branch. The department stands on its written testimony in strong support of this measure, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Next up is University of Hawaii.
Thank you, Chair, and Members of the Committee for this opportunity. We stand on our testimony as written in support, and we are here to answer any questions. And I'm Parvinder Greewal, the new dean for the College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just introducing myself.
Thank you. Next is Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, questions, Members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill. Senate Bill 1590 S D one, H D one relating to agriculture. First up is Department of Agriculture.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Isaac Meado, Division of Animal Industry. The department stands on its written testimony in support. We do have a reservation that the bill does not include a veterinary medical officer, which is important if to do a meat inspection, to oversee the whole thing, because we do not have, you know, free veterinary medical officers that are able to do these duties whilst trying to do what they're doing now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Ulupono. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair, Members of Committee. Brian Miamoda here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. My apologies, Chair, we did submit written testimony, we'll make sure.
We have it, you just didn't check off the box that says in person.
Can I check the box?
Okay.
We support the intent, we absolutely support building capacity for meat inspection. Our concern is Section 2B of the bill, which directs the Department of Agriculture to assess the steps necessary to transfer full authority of meat inspections from federal authority. We, we look at this as a supplement to what the federal government, USDA, needs to do. So we want to make sure that we're clear about that. We do support the intent of building our capacity. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, questions, Members? Representative Kobyashi?
Or Department of Ag, I assume you need the $1 million to start up the program, to hire people, to get ready for laboratory testing, to get equipment?
Well, it's kind of a complicated process. It's not an instantaneous type of thing to reestablish the program because on several different fronts on a.
So you don't need the $1 million upfront?
Not upfront, but we will need it once we start going. Probably the first year is just going to be trying to redo statutes, administrative rules, and getting notification to USDA, FSIS that the state would like to establish meat inspection programs, and then getting all the documents to them for them to be able to accept the program. So it takes probably one year at least to do that. In the meantime, the other thing that the Division would have to do is to establish all the positions necessary because these meat inspector positions are no longer, you know, in, in place or the defunct, so they have to be reestablished. And working with D-Hurd and trying to get that done, that, you know, could be doing all that the first year in concert, so that's, that takes up time as well. So not off the bat, but probably down the road.
Okay, so delayed start.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next bill. Senate Bill 2960 S D one, H D one relating to farmers. First up is Department of Ag.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee.
Okay, thank you. Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, questions, Members? Representative Kobyashi?
Director Hurd, if we look at all the farms, how many of them are fake farms versus real farms? Because this is against fake farms, right?
Okay, well, yes, but our Ag Resource Management folks, we are only, we only inspect the lessees, the ones that have farms on our ag land, we do it twice a year.
So you would have any idea?
They're all not fake, they're all.
Do you want to guess?
What?
Do you want to have, take a guess?
6,569 farms reported in 2022. I would guess, geez, that's a Brian, that's a Brian question.
Few hundred, Brian, few hundred? Probably more than that.
But our farms, none of them are fake farms. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Members. We're moving on to the next bill. Senate Bill 2401 S D two, H D one relating to feral chickens. First up is Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Is that right? No, wait, wrong one. First up is Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration. Okay, thank you, Department of Ag. Okay, thank you. Next up is Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Roar Rescue of Animal Rights. I'm in strong support. So the feral chickens need a mitigation plan, and the most appropriate office would probably be from the city, the county, the Department of Customer Services, which worked with the Humane Society to implement a prior feral cat pilot program in 2019. It is also the office to carry out the feral chicken trap pilot program. So although we should not enable others to trap feral cats or feral chickens, we should focus the mitigation plan on providing the resources and initiating the work with the appropriate animal rescue groups to get education awareness and to train. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, questions, Members? No chicken questions? Okay, we're moving on to the next bill. Senate Bill 2305 S D two, H D two relating to missing persons. Okay, so first up, we have Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I'm back on track.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kayla E. Nixon with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We will be standing on our written testimony in support. Mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, next is Executive Office on Aging. On Zoom. No? Okay? Not present? Okay, anyone else? Wait, I got one more. Honolulu Police Department? Somebody here?
Good afternoon, Chair and Members. HPD stands on our second written testimony. HPD was never against the concept of the bill. Second testimony supports the bill. We only had concerns with implementations, and we understand there, just like any other bill, there will be some hurdles to overcome. HPD is currently successful investigating missing persons, including Kapuna, and with further research, HPD supports the bill to go forward. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Hawaii Primary Care Association.
Good afternoon, Eric Abbe for the Hawaii Primary Care Association. Our organization is in strong support of this measure. We have been working closely with the Alzheimer's Association on this measure from the outset. As you review the testimony, you'll notice that there is broad community support for this measure, support from both labor and management on this issue. We, I just would want to mention that the Alzheimer's Association has been critical in working with law enforcement to try to address the concerns that were raised by HPD. It's a continuing effort, but by the looks of the testimony today, it's very positive. And so in the hopes of continuing discussion on this measure, we ask for your favorable consideration of this measure. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Hawaii Disability, Disability Rights Center.
Good afternoon, Chair, thank you, Members. I'm Lou Erdechek, I'm the Director of the Disability Rights Center. So we provide legal and advocacy services to folks with disabilities, and I generally deal with them in that capacity. But a couple of years ago, I encountered a personal experience which really opened my eyes to this, this issue. I had some friends from Canada who were in, in for their son, their son went to UH and he was graduating, and they all came, and the day before the graduation, they, they had an ant with dementia who just wandered off, and she was missing all night long. And so we filed a police report. They had her on television, you know, have you seen this person? The next day, the graduation came and went, they're even having lunch, the ant is still missing. These people didn't know what to do. The only reason they found her is because she wandered into a beauty parlor near Alamoana and obviously looked pretty strange, and so, so the operator called, called the police. The police came, they didn't even know she was on the missing person list, they didn't know she had been on television. They only reunited the family because in her note was, in her purse was a note that said, if I'm ever lost, call my niece. So they called her niece in Canada, who didn't even know she was missing, and then she called the family. So the point of all that, to me, is that we, we have a lot of gaps in the current system, and, and we clearly can do better in terms of addressing this. And so I think a silver alert would be an excellent idea. I came here prepared to respectfully disagree with HPD based on their testimony at the last hearing, but I'm delighted to see that their position has evolved, and, and we look forward to working with them, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Hawaii Parkinson's Association.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Glenn Higa. I'm the President, President of the Hawaii Parkinson Association. We stand in strong support along with our Alzheimer's Association brothers and sisters in support of this bill. You know, six years ago, I was diagnosed with young onset Parkinson's, and even though, you know, I've, I've done really well to manage my symptoms, there are others that are not as fortunate. And one of the things about Parkinson's is that many of us can still drive, and so wandering doesn't, doesn't include walking. You know, some of them could be driving, and they could be, they could go missing at that point. So, and one of the other things about Parkinson's is that if you don't take your medication within an hour of when you're supposed to, your symptoms can really appear really strongly. So I strongly urge you guys to consider this bill and for, for consideration. I'll be happy to take any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Alzheimer's Association.
Hello, Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Ran Shimobuku from the Alzheimer's Association. We stand in strong support. I would like to, to thank you for hearing this measure as, as well as that of its companion House Bill 1774, which, a big mahalo to Representative Chun who had assisted in the off-season to really refine what you have before you. So, so thank you for that. And if I can start by saying, this year is good policy. And Chair, if you would indulge me, I want to take you on a quick journey of, of the Silver Alert bill in the Hawaii State Legislature. And full disclosure, this is, full disclosure, this is unofficial research, what's available via the online state legislature's archives. So I'll take you back to 2009, this is when the Silver Alert bill was initially introduced. And as some would say, it'll take years to pass legislation, right? Unfortunately, it failed. 2010, multiple Silver Alert mechanisms were also introduced, again failed. 2011, a single measure was introduced, didn't pass. 2012, again, multiple vehicles were introduced, but again, at that point, mental impairments was added to the criteria. Following that, 2014, 2015, and 2016, multiple vehicles all failed. And as recent as 2020, despite numerous testimonies in support from family and friends of a gentleman who had wandered off and was found exactly two years after his disappearance, not by authorities, but the public or community organizations. authorities, but the public or community organization called Oahu Search and Rescue, also known as OSAR, continuously testifies that this alert is needed and they located, located the gentleman. And end noting, this measure failed and it wasn't attributed, attributed to COVID in 2020. So over the course of 15 years, lives could have been saved. Our kupuna went missing and we failed them. We failed our, their ohana, we failed their friends. We really failed as a community to protect our kupuna. But you know what? We can be the change. We can change the narrative. We can prevent unfortunate endings. Wandering is inevitably a part of the disease. However, what we do as a community is to come together in a swift and timely manner to find these individuals is up to us. Since the last committee hearing in the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs on March 20th, we've had very positive discussions with law enforcement, as, as you could see by Honolulu Police Department's testimony. So we really ask for the committee's favorable decision on this measure to allow those discussions to continue. Again, presented before you is our opportunity to save lives. The bill will save lives and the bill is good policy. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Epilepsy Foundation of Hawaii.
Aloha, esteemed Chair, Vice Chair and committee members. I am Christina Wulama, a PhD student, social worker, and the current program coordinator for the Epilepsy Foundation of Hawaii. As the leading national voluntary health organization advocating for at least 3.4 million Americans with epilepsy and seizures, the Epilepsy Foundation of Hawaii supports and provides services for the nearly 14,000 individuals living with epilepsy across the state. Our mission encompasses fostering the well-being of affected individuals through programs, educational activities, advocacy, and other services. Epilepsy is a medical condition marked by seizures, sudden urges of electrical activity in the brain, impacting a range of mental and physical functions. Additionally, individuals with mild cognitive impairment are particularly susceptible to experiencing seizures. With an estimated one in 26 Americans developing epilepsy and one in, one in 10 experiencing a seizure in their lifetime, the need for support and advocacy for this community is paramount. I come before you to urge your support for Senate Bill 2305, which pertains to missing persons. This bill is of critical importance to the epilepsy community as it addresses the safety and continuity of care for individuals who may experience seizures, including kupuna or people with cognitive impairments. The statistics are indeed concerning, with a recent 2022 study revealing that 12% of older individuals becoming lost in the U.S. resulted in death. As our society continues to age, the likelihood of encountering seniors or kupuna facing cognitive impairment or developmental disabilities increases, necessitating proactive measures to protect this vulnerable population. The proposed Silver Alert Program modeled after the successful Amber Alert System for Missing Children holds the potential to provide law enforcement agencies with a valuable tool to swiftly disseminate information about missing kupuna to the public. This rapid response can significantly enhance the chances of locating the missing person before they encounter harm or danger. In supporting Senate Bill 2305, we can take a meaningful step towards protecting our vulnerable kupuna, thereby preventing unnecessary tragedies. I implore you to consider the urgency and significance of this matter and extend your support for the implementation of the Silver Alert Program in Hawaii. Mahalo for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Oahu Search and Rescue.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of committee. My name is Riel Rasmussen. I'm here on behalf of myself, but as, also as a canine handler for Oahu Search and Rescue. As Ron said, they have been involved in a couple of unfortunate recoveries for some of the kupuna that, that our, our lack of resource and our lack of response has failed. I was involved in the search for William Burr, unfortunately, after, eight days after he went missing. And in my, in my ground search, just as a volunteer, I, I brought his flyers and he had been on the news, more, more so than most people usually get because his family from the mainland was adamant about getting help from anywhere. They, they begged for it, which anyone would. Unfortunately, there's a misconception in Hawaii from people that I've spoken to in the research I've done, that most people think there is something in place. The biggest crime here is that if you go to somebody, you say, oh, I'm, I'm going to testify for the Silver Alert Bill. What's that? And when you tell them, they go, we don't have that. And it's, it blows their mind that this isn't already in place and that they had this false sense of security that if they call and report it, that these alerts are being done. And there are some things absolutely in, in place. Crime Stoppers will, will put it, put it out. Unfortunately, most people don't go and check Crime Stoppers websites. So it's really word of mouth and the family's reaching out. And in my bringing these, these lost persons flyers from Crime Stoppers and what have you out to the community, this gentleman's backyard, he'd only been missing a week. And he'd been on the news and been in, in media and nobody even knew he was missing. And what's worse is that most people, because it had been a week past, they, they didn't seem to have that urgency. They go, oh, it's been a week. I can tell you from my experience and my training in search and rescue, that, that first couple of hours is so important to get the news out there and to get people to open their eyes, especially in Hawaii where we have a missing child, everybody's going to open their eyes and go, oh, there's a child standing in the middle of the street. That's not right. And they'll act. People here are willing to act. They're willing to respond. They're willing to make a phone call. The problem is, well, one of the problems is that with our current community, we do have a very high homeless community and, and houseless. It's, it's a big problem. But to see somebody walking down the center of the street, especially an older person, either seeming confused, disoriented, we are very quick as a community to just go, oh, there's another one. And we don't, it doesn't register as, wait a minute. Sometimes it does. There was a phone call made to Crime Stoppers about a sighting of William Burr with a dash cam photo that gave us a last place known where we could even start looking. And that's just because somebody knew, wait a minute, that doesn't look right. And they remembered seeing him. After two or three days, if you say, hey, you remember that, that guy walking down the street in a red sweatshirt? It's, it goes out of your brain so quickly. So something like this is, is vital to, to being able to reach out. All, all it's going to take is, I mean, yeah, after five, 10 minutes, maybe people will forget. But that five, 10 minutes, when you look at your phone, you see an alert, you look, the first thing, human nature, you look up and you look around. And if that's all that this accomplishes is to get somebody to look up from their phone for two minutes and look around and be aware that something might be wrong, it's going to accomplish huge things, just, just on its, on its own, on its, on its face, let alone what can happen after that when the community really gets involved. So, I mean, based on that and on behalf of Oahu Search and Rescue, and I don't know if Mr. Burr's family is going to testify today, but I'm hoping they don't mind on their behalf. I am strongly, strongly urging this committee to, to approve this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Nancy Rose. Who? Not present? Calvin Hara?
Hello, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Calvin Hara, community volunteer. Spent some 30 years in senior care. And in their, in those years, of course, met many, many kupuna with dementia and Alzheimer type of dementia. I just wanted to add to my testimony that when you are the immediate family or very close friend of a missing kupuna and others with cognitive impairment, it's very traumatic. You're, you're missing a loved one. And to conclude, the importance of, of this Silver Alert Bill is time is of essence. And that's, that's really important in, in the, the safe return of, of a kupuna. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Todd Yukitake. Yukitake?
Aloha, committee. Todd Yukitake, I support this bill. A few years ago, I actually found a, a lost kupuna. I, I didn't know they were missing at the time, but it was late at night, maybe about 11:00 P.M. in downtown. And there was an elderly man dressed really nicely, just wandering around aimlessly. And it looked odd, so I decided to help him and asked him some questions. He couldn't answer anything, like where he lived or anything like that. So then I called the police, 911, and they said that he's been missing for five or six hours. Police came, family came and, and took him back home. But, you know, if I just minded my own business, I didn't do anything, you know, he'd just keep walking around aimlessly and maybe someone would have found him, maybe not. So that's why I think this bill is very important because, you know, like I said, I, I didn't know he was missing when I found him. And it was only later that I found, found that out. So I strongly urge you to support and pass this bill. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Cree Castellanos.
My name is Cree and my grandma Emily died of Alzheimer's and my nana Nancy had vascular dementia. I think it's so important that you pass our Silver Alert Bill because think, a kupuna or anyone who wanders waiting to catch a bus back home, where home used to be in the mainland five years ago. Suddenly they're lost. As they hop off the bus, home is not there. They feel forgotten. But at their real house, their family is so worried and doesn't know who to turn to for help. If you pass our bill, they can turn to everyone and there won't be any more long-lost family members. So please help everyone feel safe and take that weight off the family members who are still looking for that lost family member, hopefully before they become long-lost, which won't happen if you pass Senate Bill 2305. That's why it's so important to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Okay, next is Rick Tabor.
Thank you, Rick Tabor. Thank you, Vice Chair and, and, and the Chair for, for hearing this bill. I'm, I'm retired from mental health. I concur with everything everybody has said here because it's been very favorable, very relieved that the HPD has, has come around to seeing the logic of this very, very important bill. So obviously I'm, I'm strongly in support of this bill. My story is I'm also a developmental disability specialist, 47 years in mental health. Well, I've worked with kupuna, I've worked with folks that are developmentally disabled. We've had, so I worked at Seattle Mental Health for 30 years. Through the years, we had people go missing. And like Calvin said and another person said here, time is everything. If we can respond and we can get the word out and people can help, you know, in a timely manner, we can, like they said, not just save lives, but save a lot of trauma that, that can happen. The vulnerability here is huge. I'll add, my mother passed away just February 7th, just a few weeks ago. And she had dementia for, she fought that for like 20 years. She would go missing, it'd be very traumatic for our family. We're lucky that we live in a small community where everybody knew her and they, they responded. So that's, that's one thing that is in our favor. But she easily could have disappeared out to the country and, and actually at one point, so this is North Dakota, I'll add, she actually went out when it was 35 below, 45 below wind chill, 1:00 in the morning. They found her at 7:00 in the morning, hypothermia, she had frozen body parts. It was, I won't traumatize folks here. It was not, it was not good. I'm, I'm listening to Ron run down the history of how long it's taken to pass this bill. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I, I can't believe it has taken this long. This is a very important bill. So I thank you for your consideration and I hope this bill passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Jennifer Cox on Zoom? Oh, in present.
Aloha, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Jennifer Cox and I live in Haiku on Maui and I am, just came from the airport. So apologies, but I'm in strong support of SB 2305. I'm one of those who has developed professionally across several sectors in my almost 13 years on Maui. And for the past two, I've been working as an, with Tepus Knows Positive Approach to Care, which is a dementia care training company that promotes a more positive care culture by uplifting the dignity of people living with brain change and educating the rest of us to be able to respond to their needs with awareness, knowledge, and skill. When individuals with dementia are lost, they may show signs of anxiety, fear, or hostility, all of which can escalate to more aggressive behavior when well-meaning people like us approach them unaware of their potential cognitive state. Within the context of a silver alert, however, when folks are reported missing, law enforcement and the general public can have an understanding of how best to identify and approach that person, not only to locate them successfully, but to do so in a way that avoids confrontation and promotes connection. I see the Silver Alert Bill as an opportunity for all of us to take responsibility in supporting our fellow community members living with dementia and to help alleviate some of the stigma and isolation that their family members and friends too often feel as care partners. Establishing a silver alert demonstrates the state's commitment to formalize a program by which all of us can help reunite families with the least amount of stress and in the least amount of time possible. Hawaii being one of the few states in the nation that does not have a formalized silver alert puts us behind the curve. But by establishing a silver alert, in my humble opinion, it would be a perfect complement to the beautiful work already happening between state, nonprofit, and private entities and individual community members in collaboration with the Executive Office on Aging's Hawaii Dementia Initiative. Together, these efforts have the potential of presenting Hawaii as a forward-thinking, dementia-competent community that knows how to live and thrive with dementia in the picture. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Angela Melody Young, on behalf of Kafalama Neighborhood Security Watch, in strong support. So the Silver Alert Program is so important and education is also so important, right? You can broadcast something on an emergency broadcast without policy to set forth education parameters and community outreach, it's not going to be effective. So raising awareness about disability and the developmentally disabled is important because for persons with autism and Alzheimer's and dementia, it can help to diagnose and evaluate the spectrum of symptoms and signs that can be characterized within these mental health conditions that are debilitating. And they can no longer contribute in a positive functional way to society. Developmental disability can cause a neurodivergent medical condition which is debilitating to the person. Those who suffer from autism characteristics, characteristics can make life very challenging. Why is identifying these behaviors relating to dementia and disability awareness important to law enforcement, right? Their behavior can be seemingly normal. It takes a specialized behavioral analysis service examiner to diagnose those that are mentally diminished and cannot function appropriately. So their behavior then is of a concern, right? Examples of social communication, interaction skills that are diminished and characterized within these following social symptoms of the developmentally disabled is, and here's like a list of symptoms, okay? So avoids and does not keep eye contact, lacks the ability to effectively grasp communication, does not notice when others are hurt or upset, lacks the ability to recognize others' emotions, repeats words and phrases, called echolalia, and is focused on parts of objects and has obsessive focuses, must follow certain routines, flaps hands, rocks body or spins in circles, has unusual reactions to the way things sound, smell, taste, look, and feel. So that's symptoms of developmentally disabled persons. And so we can really raise awareness in the community with the Silver Alert Program about the spectrum, right, of these conditions. And also, for example, seizure awareness, as the epilepsy group just testified, to raise awareness about seizure is also very important to learn about. And health conditions.
You're straying from the subject.
Oh, okay, yes. So basically, health conditions that are derived from the medical conditions that the Silver Alert Program is going to address, we should really educate and implement programs like the Silver Alert. And a structure of a training program to copy is a crisis response intervention training strategy implemented from the Bureau of Justice. And it's implemented by the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. And it's a training for Honolulu Police Department officers. So, yeah, you know, those who are suffering from disabilities are marginalized and can potentially suffer from health and, and income disparities with inequitable access to healthcare. So there should be policies to focus on education awareness and deconstructing bias of the disabled while providing. So there should be policies to focus on education awareness and deconstructing bias of the disabled while providing awareness. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gino Saquana. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Building and Construction Trades Council. And I'm also a board member of the Alzheimer's Association of Hawaii. Strong support of this bill. Dementia affects our members and their, our retirees of our affiliates, the affiliates that I represent, and our members in some shape, way, or form, whether if they were to be diagnosed with dementia, some type of dementia, or having to care for somebody with dementia. This bill is very important to us and will be a favorable decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
I would like to testify via Zoom.
Okay, please, we'll let you go first. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Taylor and I'm a police officer with the Maui Police Department Cold Case Unit. Myself and the Maui Police Department are here today to express our full support for SB 2305, which aims to establish a Silver Alert Program to assist in locating and protecting missing senior citizens. I've submitted written testimony detailing the importance of this bill, particularly in providing additional resources for law enforcement agencies to locate elderly individuals facing cognitive impairment or developmental disabilities. I am fully committed to answering any questions you may have regarding my support for this bill and how I believe it will benefit our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Please come forward.
Aloha Chair and Committee. My name is Ed Warner. I'm with DK Movement, Fathers Against Strong Driving. I'm a strong advocate of bringing pair. The reason why I'm here today is in full support of this Silver Alert Bill. And I just want to thank HPD. I do a lot of work out there on bringing safety to the state of Hawaii. So as I start, you know, this thing affected my family. You know, my mom's sister, my dad's sisters. You know, ten years ago, I live out in Anakuli. Ten years ago, four houses down, my neighbor, and we was all brought up together, his dad, right? Actually, he came in my house and my kids went freak out. And he had Alzheimer's. Knowing that I know who he was, but then I came because I, I'm downstairs and my kids was upstairs. And I came up and I knew who he was and I could guide him out, out of my house. And he was one of the Pili aloha's that live a couple houses away from me in Anakuli. And guide him back to his house. I think a year later, they found him on respawn in his neighbor's yard. And he passed. You know, twenty years ago, out in Laie, one of my really good friends, Moitau, his dad, I think, his dad went missing and they found his remains up in Laie. And, you know, I still remember that day that he called me and, you know, I was so hurt. I could feel his pain, you know? Growing up, you know, within my family and friends that live in our community, you know, there was no such thing of Alzheimer's or dementia. We just thought that they were getting nuts. I mean, that's, that's the way that, you know? And, you know, as you go forward and, and we see what's happening now, you know, it is very important that we can find, you know, those people that are missing. You know, two years ago, now I'm going to address about my, my personal family members. You know, my wife's oldest sister had dementia. The oldest daughter, I think seventeen of them. So she passed. My brother-in-law, I think he was seventy-seven years old. Yeah, he passed two years ago with dementia. And it was hard because he were living with us in our home, right? And we didn't know what to do because we, you know, we just didn't know what to do. We wasn't trained about this. So my wife decided to tell me, hon, you got to bought up. I got to cage the room, the house. So he, you know, we, I live on a highway, so he came out a couple times and tried to walk on the road. He never know where he was. And, you know, I tried boarding up. We even put cameras in our home just so we could keep an eye on his whereabouts. And, and, you know, he was really sick with this and he passed two years ago. And now forward, you know, it just, that, you know, it's my wife's, is really, you know, getting affected of this. I can see me in my household. You know, she leaves the water on. She leaves the stoves on. And now we cannot leave her alone. So, you know, I came here all the way out from Anakuli and someone got to stay home with her. And, you know, she's not doing too good and I know it's going to get worse. And, you know, when it's affecting, you know, that's my love of my life. It really hurts that we cannot do nothing. And I just thank Alzheimer's for, you know, the help that we can get. And now I can, you know, not only bought up my house, but I can come out and, and, you know, help her without boarding up the house and, you know, having somebody home with her. And, you know, I, I, I just ask you guys, please, you know, just support this. It's going to be a big help. She was always by my side. We've been fighting for safety of the state and our community. And this is no different of the safety if we can get our kapunas back to the residents. But I just want to say thank you guys for hearing me out. And you guys take care. Mahalo ke akua and God bless you guys.
Aloha. Hey, anyone else wishing to testify? Hey, please come forward, okay? Seeing none members questions. Representative Ward.
Disability Rights Center, Lou. Yes.
How many lives are at stake here? If we add up all the different categories that have been mentioned, how many people actually would be covered by this? In other words, those who are by this, old, dementia, impaired disability, et cetera, just, again, I'm a metrics guy. What are the numbers? How many people are we talking about?
I think Ron would probably be in a better position to tell you that. There's different versions of the bills.
Ron, come on up. Ron, come on up. You can both sit there, actually. Because it seems as though we've kicked the can down the road for a number of years and with the amount of people that we have.
Well, I think this idea has been, has been, as the gentleman mentioned, has been kind of kicking around for a long time. I actually thought we had a Silver Alert Program. I didn't realize that we, that we didn't. And I think a lot of states do have it. I mean, this is sort of a pretty obvious kind of a thing that should be done. And I know that different versions of the bills, I think, maybe had age limits, whether you're sixty or sixty-five or whether you're developmentally disabled. I mean, but it, but it potentially could include a lot of people. I mean, in terms of people who do get dementia. I'm sure he has the numbers better, but even just attending these hearings, this session, and listening to the stories that other people told, like this gentleman, and I think, I think Representative Takayama was very open. He shared a video that the Alzheimer's Association sponsored and Caroline from the Executive Office on Aging. I've been amazed at just how so many people through this session have said, oh, you know, I know somebody that had the same kind of situation. So I think, I think this really affects all of us, Representative.
So we got fifty, a hundred thousand? How many people?
Yeah, so Representative, thanks for your question. And Lou, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to conjure up my thoughts. That was very helpful. So twenty-nine thousand representative individuals currently sixty-five and older live with the disease. That number is expected to increase to roughly thirty-five thousand. Correct. So I can only speak from, you know, the Alzheimer's Association's concern.
I wanted the macro, not just individually.
Yeah, so sorry, sir. I don't have that information. I can speak to the Alzheimer's piece.
Okay, no, no, that's okay. I was just looking, because it looks like it's not going to be forty or fifty. It could be up to a hundred thousand if we added all the groups together. Okay, Lou, the second question, though, to you. I never realized that Alzheimer guys get in cars and drive. Is that, was that you who said that?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, sorry. Oh, the gentleman, where do they go? Or do they find them when they run out of gas or electricity? What, I mean, that's a new piece of data. I never realized that you could have an Alzheimer guy driving and then suddenly get lost or run over or pulled over by the police. I don't know what, that's a new element I didn't realize.
No, sir. People with Parkinson's are still able to drive. Most of them still have enough cognitive ability to do, to do so.
So is Parkinson's, not Alzheimer's, then?
Not Alzheimer's.
Okay, I imputed it to both and all of the disabilities. Okay, that's clear. So they, they come back to where they started, then?
Hopefully, yes. But if they don't, if they get lost and they, and they don't have their medication, the danger part is that they could, their symptoms can return as quickly as an hour after their medication has, has worn off. Because medication for Parkinson's does not cure Parkinson's. It just allows them to do their activities of daily life.
Okay, last question, Lou. What's the average amount of wandering around time that someone with Alzheimer's has? In other words, they go out, they come back in five hours, five days, five months? What's the timeframe?
Again, I think other people probably.
Other people, who knows the average lot?
Well, I will say that in terms of your question about driving, I mean, I think that the idea of some of these folks getting behind the wheel is probably be caused for, I don't know, I don't know if it's any more or less scarier than wandering off.
Did you say marijuana? No, we won't go there. Sir.
Aloha, Representative. LJ Duenez, Executive Director for the Alzheimer's Association. We don't know. What we do know is six out of ten people with Alzheimer's will wander. So some may wander.
We don't know how long, then?
We don't know. Some may wander for a few minutes. Some may wander for days.
Let me reverse the question. With a silver alert, does this not speed it up by exponential amounts? When as soon as they're gone, they are reported?
Certainly, once they are reported, you know, the Silver Alert would have the opportunity to geo-target certain areas, whether it's a mile or two-mile radius, where folks within that area will receive alerts via text message or other types of.
So those states that have the Silver Alert, how long is the average they take to recover people?
I cannot, I do not know.
That would be important for us to know because it would be an encouraging factor that, you know, without Silver Alert, you know, you're ten hours with Silver, with Silver Alert, you're four hours or three hours or two hours. And that would probably encourage HPD to know that this is not a witch hunt going all around for a knot, actually. If the Chair gives permission, of course. I think he shook his head. Under the microphone, please.
First and foremost, anybody here who has more expertise, please correct me if I'm incorrect, but in what I have studied and been taught, any kind of memory disease is usually progressive. So it's not going to be a matter of somebody just all of a sudden one day goes, oh, I'm going to give up my keys and stop driving. A lot of it is denial-based. So a lot of people who have dementia, nobody wants to admit that they're going, that they're at that stage. They don't realize they're at that stage. So it's up to the families to really make the call. But now you have somebody who's over the age of eighteen that is, when do you make the call to take somebody's keys away? When does it become house arrest, you know, for their own safety? And a family struggle with it. It falls on the caregiver. So to get into, behind the wheel of a vehicle, it's, it's common. The difference is because it happens in episodes with a lot of memory disease, they'll get in a vehicle, know they're going to the store. There's, there is a gentleman named Frank that is still missing from Kapalae because he went to Home Depot. He parked his vehicle in one area of the parking lot, came up the other. His family says that he knew who he was, who his family was that day, where he was going. Something happened in his brain in that moment in the store that he forgot where he parked his car. And it triggered something where he was then seen walking across through Costco and he was never seen again. He's been missing seven months now, I think.
Seven months, okay, that's a link to me. Chair, if I may have one small, quick question. You brought to mind what may be a false positive. Have any of the experience ratings said that some people use this to control some of the elderly people or get back at them? False positive, meaning, hey, I'm going to put this guy on Silver Alert. He's really not in that effect? Has anybody misused the system is the question?
I'm sure people have tried.
Okay, I was looking for numbers, actually.
Yeah, that's why it goes through law enforcement and it's not just somebody you can call a hotline and say they're missing. It has to fit certain parameters and there is some vetting that's done before they issue an alert like this.
It's been no false positive so far, right? Okay, okay, good. Because there shouldn't be, actually. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank all, thank you for everybody for coming in.
My hand up. I just, I worked in Washington where we actually used these kinds of programs. Typically, you can find folks.
Excuse me, we're past the testimony part. We're just in Kionai and then we're going to move on from here. Okay, so just for everybody's, you know, the intention of the committee is to move this measure forward. So thank you for coming and we appreciate all of you coming in. Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure. And Representative Ward, if you want stats, if you look at the DHS testimony, there's a link that goes to the Texas study. Okay, and then moving on to Senate Bill 3094, SD 2 HD 1, relating to peer support specialists. First up is Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation.
Good afternoon, Chair. Melanie Martin testifying on behalf of Director Tommy Johnson with the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. We stand in support of this measure. We support the intent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the next test of our State Council of Developmental Disabilities.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Elizabeth Pearson, intern of State Council on Developmental Disabilities. I'm testifying on behalf of James LeBrie, our Chair. I'm sorry, intern. I'm the intern, he's the Chair. We just wanted to emphasize a couple of things. We stand on our testimony in strong support. I always want to emphasize, urging you guys to pass this bill just for more compassionate care resources. Oftentimes, people with developmental disabilities are going through the, you know, going through the system and having someone peer-to-peer who has been through the same traumas as them as they go from home to home and, you know, face a lot of trauma and grief. Being able to come along, be, have someone come alongside you who has been through the same thing is extremely impactful and really creates more compassionate care resources. So we just really wanted to urge the committee to pass this with that in mind. Thank you so much for the chance to testify.
Thank you. Next up is Department of Health, Behavior Health Administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Committee members. Amy Naylor, I work with Adult Mental Health Division, Department of Health. The state stands behind its written testimony in strong support of this measure and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Next is Office of Wellness and Resilience, Office of the Governor.
Aloha, Chair. Vice Chair, Members Committee, Tia Hartzock, Executive Director, Office of Wellness and Resilience. Stand in strong support of this measure, hoping that the importance of peer support specialists in the systems gets enhanced and uplifted through this type of legislation. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Epic Ohana.
Good afternoon. My name is Janee Davis. I'm a youth partner with Epic Ohana and I'm here to support the Peer Support Working Group. But peer support is more than offering a listening ear, but also meeting, it's about meeting our youth and our young adults where they're at and serving them with a heart and knowledge of us having, navigating through various systems. And as for me, I have experienced growing up homelessness and being in the foster care system. And during this time, I did have no peer support. And there was also a lack of like wellbeing check-ins from service providers. And I'm not sharing this out of spite or for sorrow. But to bring light into these dark places and to bridge the gaps happening in and through our youth, but the chains can start with us. And as for youth partners, we all have the ability to provide that peer support, their own lived experiences. And this is very essential to building rapport and trust with our youth and our young adults as we continue to encourage and walk alongside them in recovery or receiving services and encouraging them to build a community around them. Additionally, it is so important that those with lived experience are able to be compensated for their time and their contributions to any working space that they are in. And I am blessed to be able to be a youth partner and to get paid and for what I do and for what I love. Lastly, I humbly ask that this committee also considers paying those with lived experience for being part of this working group as well. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Poor Foundation. Okay. Not present. Anybody else here wishing to testify? Anybody else here wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Okay.
Question.
Yep, Representative Koya.
For Office of Wellness, it seems that this is too big a task. Too many people are chiming in, from corrections to DD to substance abuse. If you're going to do this as the, if you're going to do this project as a facilitator, I think you need to narrow down the scope. It can't be everything. Anyway, that's just a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure, members. Final measure on the agenda, SB 3279, S D one, H D one, relating to mental health. First up is Executive Office on Early Learning. Okay, thank you. Next is Office of Wellness and Resilience.
Aloha, Chair. Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, we stand in strong support of this, this bill, trying to look at establishing a state of well-being project, looking at building out Tier One and Tier Two in key stakeholder communities as defined or as identified in the testament, in the bill itself. We're looking into implementing this through our office and excited about the scope and breadth of this, of this bill. If you have questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Elected Officers, Officials to Protect American Blue, Code Blue Water Solutions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Honorable Members of the Committee. My name is Alex Cornell-Duhu. I'm a former state representative and president of Elected Officials to Protect America Code Blue Water Security Solutions. And I'm joining us from beautiful Mauna Kea in my condo here. This legislation came about in many ways because I'm also a professor at the University of San Francisco, and we have a certificate in public leadership for elected officials. And in that certificate, the lawmakers come from around the world and focus on different policy initiatives. And in that policy, a lot of law wakers from Hawaii and different parts of the country and world really wanted to do something to help in the wake of the tragic Maui fires. And as a result, they came together and looked at, there was a gap in the, basically the resources for Tier One mental health. And they came together and said, hey, we should put some legislation in. And what do we mean by Tier One mental health? So Tier One is essentially emotional intelligence, well-being, mindfulness. It's about 90% of the population, and it is really focused in on different population sections, like the education system or first responders. Tier Two focuses on higher-risk groups, and really, the social workers and the counselors are really important there. And Tier Three is more psychologists and one-on-one care. And unfortunately, Tier One gets left in dust sometimes when we focus mainly on Tier Two, gets a lot of the education, still unbelievably vitally important. But the wonderful thing about Tier One mental health is it makes the community focused on the solution. So for instance, in a school system, the students are the primary ones receiving the information, but the administrators, the teachers, the facility workers are all part of it and learning. And then the parents as well organically become part of it. So it was raising the overall health of the community. And what this does is it actually becomes economical, too, because it reduces the need for Tier Two and Tier One services. And Tier Two is about 7% of the population, and Tier One is a much smaller percentage. So just as you have primary preventative healthcare, reduces the cost of healthcare in the overall system, focusing on Tier One mental health, particularly in preventing before disaster, preventing, making the community more resilient or after a disaster, that's giving the skills to better manage what happened. Additionally, there's a lot of really wonderful research out there. For instance, Harvard put together 300 different studies and showed that emotional intelligence has the ability to be the number one success indicator in life and in personal life. So you were not only providing more resilience in our healthcare system, but we're also equipping students and first responders, which are individual groups we were focusing on, with skill sets that can benefit them exponentially in their careers and their personal lives as well. So in that manner, SB 32 takes a holistic approach to mental health that can be an example for other states and nations. We enthusiastically support SB 3279. Mahalo for your time.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the Containment Foundation.
Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and Honorable Committee Members. Aloha, my name is Daniel Cordaro. I'm a resident of Honolulu, the founder and CEO of the Containment Foundation, and I'm a former Yale University faculty member with a PhD in psychology. Over the past decade, I've dedicated my entire life to researching and implementing universal mental health practices that transform and save lives. Through our work, my team and I have witnessed firsthand the economic and human health benefits of preventative mental health education, impacting over 1.3 million individuals across 10 countries worldwide. I'm here today to emphatically endorse SB 3279, the State of Well-Being Bill, as a critical step towards promoting health, well-being, and economic prosperity for all of Hawaii. The problem is clear. Preventable suicide is the second-leading cause of death for children globally and the fourth-leading cause of death for our Keiki in Hawaii. Nationwide, one in five children and one in six adults struggle with common everyday mental illness like anxiety and stress. Globally, $1 trillion and 12 billion working days are lost annually to preventable workplace mental illness, including occupational burnout and compassion fatigue within our education and first responder communities. The solution is also clear. Simple preventative practices at the Tier One level can reduce common mental illness symptoms for up to 90% of practitioners. Studies have demonstrated a minimum of 11 to 1 return on investment for implementing these approaches in schools and a 6 to 1 return on investment for high-performance work environments, such as those of our police, firefighters, and EMS workers who risk their lives for our communities every day. I'm encouraged by the legislation's recognition that therapists alone do not make a state of well-being. It requires empowering entire communities. Our students, educators, families, and first responders need education and skills to help themselves so that they can in turn uplift everyone around them. Mental health is everyone's responsibility. For as little as $30 per person annually or $20,000 per school annually, Tier One infrastructure offers the lowest-cost, highest-return opportunities of any other mental health support system available today. It's vital that the state of Hawaii invests in evidence-based Tier One program partners with high fidelity of implementation and rigorous outcome measurements for every stakeholder community. Post-pandemic, many programs and services promise big outcomes but yield disappointing results. Hawaii has an extraordinary opportunity here to become the USA's first state of well-being and lead the way in integrated approaches to mental health education for schools, first responders, and families nationwide. The state of well-being designation must have substance and meaning, so it's paramount that the appropriate budget be allocated to support the education, measurement, and professional development incentives for each of our stakeholder groups cited in SB 3279. With deep gratitude and enthusiasm, I urge the legislature to provide the support and budget this bill deserves, enabling Hawaii to lead the mental health revolution worldwide. I'm available for advisory and discussion on these matters in whatever ways may be helpful in the future. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Honorable Committee Members. I am Heidi Roddenberry, former resident of Maui Westside. I'm testifying in strong support as of SB 3279. I have submitted written testimony about how vitally important Tier One mental health is with evidence-based details, including some highlights I'll share now. Sadly, suicide is the fourth-leading cause of fatal injury for children 15 and under, reported by the state health department. But it isn't just in Hawaii. Across the US, mental health problems are affecting one out of five children. And left unaddressed, these mental, emotional, and behavioral problems are likely to go into adulthood with devastating and costly outcomes, such as incarceration, unemployment, and reliance on public assistance. Research on Tier One mental health services is clear. Turning schools into centers of well-being can have both short-term and long-term positive outcomes. With teachers and administrative skills in Tier One mental health tools, counselors and other mental health workers will be able to focus on the higher-level interventions that address the critical Tier Two and Tier Three needs and support positive social-emotional outcomes which are related to academic success as well as healthy transitions to adulthood. Tier One mental health tools taught through school systems produce cost savings by investing in mental health promotion and early intervention versus treatment. Just as it's been shown in healthcare that investing in preventive and primary care can lower costs with higher patient satisfaction, investing in Tier One practices can save millions and ultimately be a district's most cost-effective endeavor as it affords the opportunity to address mental health concerns before they reach a point of extreme emotional and financial cost. Thank you for your visionary leadership in helping our Keiki and our Ohana. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, please come forward.
Aloha. Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support of improving the quality of mental and behavioral health of the general public in the state of Hawaii. So the purpose of this act is to create a focus group to develop a framework, oh, actually, sorry, I was looking at the wrong one. Okay, so this is for the State of Well-Being Project, Tier One and Tier Two. Okay, so in strong support, and this will create a project called the State of Well-Being Project within Office of Wellness and Resiliency with an appropriation of funds to address acute and chronic mental illnesses. So untreated mental illness is one of the top predators of suicide, substance addiction, incarceration, and adult disability. It causes a loss of jobs, it causes homelessness, domestic violence, violent crime, and school dropout rates. So the goal of this act is to integrate a complete action plan of Tier One and Tier Two. Tier One, mental health support system, provide skills training for the community, it increases the awareness of safety and public health education for the community, and it also provides training for public institutions, such as school systems, for students and teachers, and also for the firefighters and police and medical staff and other first responder groups within the public institutions. So Tier Two is a specialized support plan, which involves group specialized interventions, and it creates culturally responsive policies for groups to intervene with mental health and behavioral health issues. So it is very appropriate for the Governor's Office of Wellness and Resiliency to work on such a dire concern in the community. So in strong favor of this act to set forth policies to improve the quality of mental and behavioral health.
Thank you. Any other testifiers? Okay, questions, members? Okay, we're going to recess for decision-making. Okay, we're going to recommit the committee on finance for decision-making on Agenda One and Two. First up, Agenda One. Senate Bill 116, S D one, H D one, recommendation is to pass as-is. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 116, S D one, H D one, as-is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ayu.
Aye.
Representative Chun. Representative Cochran is excused. Representative Garrett.
Aye.
Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Kila.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Lamosau. Representative Morikawa.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoro. Representative Poi Poi. Representative Takanouchi. Representative Alcos is excused. Representative Ward. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 3290, S D two, H D one, relating to American Sign Language. Recommendations pass as-is. Discussion. Members, I just want to note that, you know, there are several measures like this that have working groups, and working groups in the end will need some level of funding, so just keep that in mind as we go into conference. These measures, just because it doesn't have a dollar amount, there's some financial impact. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 3290, S D two, H D one, as-is, noting the excused absences of Representatives Cochran and Alcos, who will be noted excused for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2837, S D two, H D one. Recommendations pass as-is. Discussion. Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 2837, S D two, H D one, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2345, S D two, H D one. We're going to be blanking out the FDE and some clarifying technical language. Any discussion? Vice Chair for the vote, H D two.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 2345, S D two, H D one, with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2556, S D two, H D two. We're also going to be blanking out the FDE and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 2556, S D two, H D two, with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2937, S D one, H D two. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 2937, S D one, H D two, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on. Senate Bill 3191, S D one, H D two. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 3191, S D one, H D two, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 3192, S D one, H D one. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3192, SD1, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. House, Senate Bill 2782, SD2, HD1. Blacking out the FDE and tech. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2782, SD2, HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2287, SD2, HD1. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2287, SD2, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 3305, HD2. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3305, HD2, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2257, SD3, HD1. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2257, SD3, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2070, SD1, HD1. We're gonna be moving this out as-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2070, SD1, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 3207, SD2, HD1. As-is. Discussion. Representative Ayu.
Chair, I think that there's, I definitely think that there's some issues with this cap and the sunset. I'm not sure if this bill solves the prob, you know, solves the problem in the way that, you know, we best retain control over the salary, and I'm not sure the Board of Education is exercising proper oversight. So I'm just gonna be with reservations for now to see how this plays out. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Ward.
Chair, I'm gonna be voting no because testimony and the logic of the need and for now did not rise to the level of, yeah, this is a good idea. Performance-based and what it was, the shocker was the performance indicators are put out by the superintendent, not by the Board. Means the tail wagging the dog. So what the Board was doing by doing this.
Okay, thank you. That's well, well taken. The, I would just say this to that, that point. There are metrics that are in the BNF website that actually measure performance, and the departments come up with those metrics. So we, that's common practice in what we do, and I've always thought that we need to change some of that because a lot of them score 90, 100% because it's their own metrics. So we, we need to reevaluate how we measure all these things in every area and not only in this area. So, point well taken. Any further discussion? Representative Keela.
I do not envy the position of the Superintendent of DOE because it is one of the largest districts you probably have to oversee in the country. But I think to the testimony and some of the concerns, it's nothing against them, it's just, there are some concerns. So I appreciate the work he does. I don't envy it, but it is a conversation we still have to have. So it's reservations.
Okay. Thank you very much. Representative Kobayashi.
WR, in keeping with my neighbor.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3207, SD2, HD1, as-is, noting the reservations of Representatives Ayu, Keela, Kobayashi, and Poi Poi. Are there any other reservations? Representative Lamasau's reservations, any additional? Okay, noting the no vote of Representative Ward, are there any other no votes? Okay, seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2475, SD2, HD2. As-is. Yeah, this one, all the amendments that they were asking for are gonna have subject matter to deal with it, so as-is for now. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2475, SD2, HD2, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, members, we're gonna move on to Agenda Two. Vice Chair, a second. Okay, first up is Senate Bill 2600, HD1. Recommendation is to pass as-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2600, HD1, as-is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ayu.
Aye.
Representative Chun. Representative Cochran is excused. Representative Garrett. Representative Kahaloa. Representative Keela.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi.
Aye.
Representative Lamasau. Representative Morikawa. Representative Nishimoto. Representative Poi Poi. Representative Taki Nuchi. Representative Alcos is excused. Representative Ward. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2170, SD1, HD1. We're just gonna be re-defecting the defective date to the House defective date, which is July 1, 3,000. HD2. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2170, SD1, HD1 with amendments, noting the excused absences of Representatives Cochran and Alcos who will be noted excused for the rest of this agenda. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 3220, SD2, HD1. Same recommendation, just changing the defective date to the House defective date. HD2. Any discussion? Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3220, SD2, HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2943, SD2, HD1. Recommendation is to pass as-is. This is another working group with some financial implication. As-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2943, SD2, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 3242, SD1, HD1. This one has some requirements that may have financial impact in the future, so we'll just keep it moving as-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3242, SD1, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 3183, SD2, HD2. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair. Oh, Representative Ward.
Chair, I'm not convinced that the EV guys, I mean, I know we're gonna transition to EV guys, but I think we're just bending over backwards to just say, hey, 50 bucks and you're even with all these other people who drive and pay the amount of tax for gas. It should at least be 60 or 200 dollars.
Yeah. So this is, this is giving the county the authority to do it. The state already has something in place, so this is on top of what already exists. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3183, SD2, HD2, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Representative Ward is a no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2443, SD2, HD2. As-is. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2443, SD2, HD2, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2159, SD2, HD1. We're gonna move this out as-is. Your amendment, you can check that with subject matter, and they can address it there. We can deal with it in conference. We will just keep this measure moving forward. Any discussion? As-is. Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2159, SD2, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2079, HD1. As-is. Discussion. Okay, Representative Ward.
Have they really thought this out in any detail? I know the enforcement issue or the actual accountability, it seems pretty loosey-goosey right now. And it's a good idea, but I just wonder if they could take, get, get it off the ground and make it successful.
Understood. Okay, any further discussion?
Implementation is always a problem.
Yes. Yeah. That's why we, we always had you to count on, but now we're gonna lose you, so. Okay, Vice Chair for the vote. As-is.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2079, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 3365, SD2, HD1. As-is. Discussion. Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3365, SD2, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Yeah, yeah. This one was one of those that will have a requirement that may have additional form, financial implications into the future, so. Sorry I didn't say that earlier and you guys voted already, so. Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2362, SD1, HD1. Recommendation to pass as-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2362, SD1, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1590, SD1, HD1. As-is. Discussion.
Money.
Okay, Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 1590, SD1, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, Senate Bill 2960, SD1, HD1. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2960, SD1, HD1, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 2401, SD2, HD1. We're gonna, we're gonna add a section to add a percentage match from the counties that are getting this grant from the state. HD2. Yeah.
Like one to one or?
A percentage match. Yeah.
If the.
Sorry, yeah. So the percentage will be blank at this point. Okay, any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2401, SD2, HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2305, SD2, HD2. As-is. Discussion. Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 2305, SD2, HD2, as-is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 3094, SD2, HD1. We're gonna be changing the defective date to the House defective date. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3094, SD2, HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. On the final measure for the day, Senate Bill 3279, SD1, HD1. We're gonna be changing the defective date to July 1, 3,000. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Recommendation of the Chairs to pass SB 3279, SD2, SD1, HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. We are adjourned.